Welcome to our Commissioners Meeting, our Staff Meeting of September the 27th. If we could please introduce ourselves, that would be great. Leslie Hervey, Clerk to the Board.
Good afternoon, I'm County Commissioner Denise Dreehouse.
Jeff Aludo, County Administrator.
Charlie Anis, Prosecutor's Office.
Thank you. Stephanie Summerold-Dumas, President of the Hamilton County Board of Commissioners. We will get started because we have quite a few things to do today. And our first item on the agenda is Forest Park TIF District Proposal. And the City Manager, Don Jones, is here from Forest Park. Would you like to come up? You're welcome to do so.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Jeff, did you want to say anything before he got started?
I'll leave the guts of this to the City Manager. But just for folks who may be watching at home wondering kind of why we're talking about this today. So, under Ohio, talking about this today. So, under Ohio law, there's a provision where cities or townships who wish to do tax increment financing districts for a period of time over 10 years or for an amount that exceeds 75% in exemption have to give a certain amount of notification to counties. Ultimately, the county has 30 days to consider that and to determine whether or not to object to either the duration or the rate that is being proposed for the exemption, and then to enter into a negotiating period for compensation, et cetera, or to just not object and approve the term and the rate. So, we received notice of a tax increment financing district from Forest Park related to a residential subdivision. The 30-day period that the Board has, I believe expires on the date of your legislative meeting this Thursday. So, we wanted to make sure that Forest Park had the chance to come in, talk to the projects that the Board could adequately consider.
Okay, thanks. Good summary.
Very good. Well, thank you for having us and taking the time to consider our TIF district. And we think it's going to be a great project. I want to tell you a little bit about the project itself that we are using the TIF funds for. We are doing a housing project, residential housing, in the city of Forest Park. And we're calling it right now, again, it's a private development. The city will be participating in terms of infrastructure. It's with the Blue Ocean Group. They've done several projects throughout the community, throughout the Hamilton County. They're small local developers, so we think that's important for us as our city in terms of supporting the local developers and their ability to bring projects to market. Also, as part of this will be the Nyer Properties. So, we'll get started with, again, it's kind of an aerial here as to where it's at. It's kind of hard to see. But basically, it's on Waycross Avenue near, in between Winton and Hamilton. It's about a 30-acre site approximately. And it's been, it's been one of the few sites at a Butts, Winton Woods, Winton Woods Forest, property owned by Winton Woods. But it's one of the few sites left in Forest Park that is available for residential housing and for development. The project itself is located in a CRA which already gives it a 15% tax abatement, excuse me, a 15-year 100% tax abatement. That CRA has been in place for quite some time. As a proposal on the financing side, again, the city's participating in infrastructure. We're looking to help finance the road, the sewers, the water, and everything that goes along with that. So, if the city's going to be participating in that, you know, it has to be funded. So, the TIF will provide the gap financing for the project to make it happen. Without the TIF, this project will not go forward. They're also proposing, as a developer, a special assessment on the first 15 years so that the developer will be placing an assessment on the property. It's effectively 50% of what would have been the tax rate for those 15 years. The CRA is important for the developer to bring these houses to market based on making them affordable and making them more attractive in terms of the infill that we're using right now. The average lot size, these will be regularly zoned house. We've actually lowered our requirements for zoning in terms of the size of the lots. So, these are 80-foot wide lots. Normally, they're 100. So, we've allowed more homes to be built and more density to occur in this particular area. We've zoned it R2, which is a single-family residential. Again, so we've already completed, and what's the city done? We've already completed the zoning portion of this. The CRA has been in place for quite some time. This is a copy, or at least a layout, of how it's going to work. If you notice, the road in the middle is the public infrastructure. That includes, again, the sewer, the water, the storm sewer, everything, the road. That's a 3,000-foot cul-de-sac. This site has significant issues with regards to development. And that's, again, part of the reasons that the city needs to participate in helping with the infrastructure costs because topography is, said at least, is very challenging through there. Again, there's how the houses will be laid out. The blue section was recently developed on, over the last, or at least the portion on Waycross. Those are existing single-family homes. This will be the remaining portion of that acreage. Again, you can see on the bottom, it's Butts, Winton Woods. Our job, and we're working with the developer to create the best project for the community. We've provided plan review zoning and other approvals as necessary. It's already been rezoned to R2, which allows for the more dense housing. It also is, we've also created a variance for that long cul-de-sac, which is kind of unusual. It's a pretty long cul-de-sac. As I said, it's 3,000 feet. Site clearing and prep has already started, and so it's already ready to go, and we've already approved that as well. We've issued the permits and provided inspections for everything. What the city also provides is the CRA, which is already, again, it's already in place. It's been there for a while. We're looking at doing a TIF district to support the infrastructure, as well as going into and making special assessments on the homes. Again, the development challenges here, which make it more expensive to develop this land, is the topography, stormwater. Because of the topography and some of the issues with Winton Woods, there may be an additional onsite storage requirement. MSD, again, up and down. There may have to be a lift station, which, again, provides, again, more expense. City Water Works, City of Cincinnati, has already determined that we have to loop the water, which requires an additional expense as well. The biggest problems we're having with the inflation of the construction costs, and if we get involved, it's prevailing wage as well. So, there's a lot of issues that are going on right now, not only on the site, but in the economy. A little bit about Forest Park, our housing strategy. This is part of our housing strategy going forward. We have about four sites that we're going to actively be developing. Now, the city won't develop them, but we'll be participating with developers in the housing market. So, it's, again, we're the second-largest city in Hamilton County. Last 10 years, we've had a 9% growth rate. In spite of that, 9% growth rate, we haven't had any new construction essentially since 2006. So, most of our houses or our communities are built out. Our population density is a majority African-Americans. We're a very diverse community, very proud of it, and we want to keep it that way. We have a growing Hispanic population. We have immigrant residents from over 300-plus countries, and most of those are, again, Bhutanese, Nepal, South Africa. We also have a large, growing youth segment in our community. So, our community's getting younger, which means a lot of larger families, people with kids, are moving into the community. Broad income range, but basically, we're a middle-income community. But we also have a significant amount of senior citizens who have lived in their homes 30-plus years and are aging out of their existing homes. So, that's part of what we're talking about in our housing strategy. Most of our homes are single-family. There are a few, some apartments, but they're clustered in individual sections. Again, most of them were built, again, just like most of northern Hamilton County, late 50s up through the mid 70s. They're affordable. They're in existing, established neighborhoods. But what we lack in our community is move-up housing. And we're losing residents to Mason, to Westchester, in places where people have bought their first home and their roots are here, and now their families are growing a little bit, and they need to get that next step up home. We don't have those homes because we haven't built a house since 2006. And so, we're looking to have all types of homes in our community that will appeal to all of our residents. As our senior citizens move up, we want to have housing for seniors, that type of housing. We're looking at, one of our other developments is having patio homes and attached ranches. We're looking for low maintenance in our HOAs. We're also looking in one of our other developments to have some high-rise apartment livings as well. So, we've got multiple developments going on, but this one, a single family. We're working currently with the Hamilton County, with Hamilton County and the LISC and the Community Building Institute on a housing action plan. So, that'll be coming forward as well, to talk about how the city plans on moving forward with our housing. Why do we need it? The existing CRA. Why do we need the 30-year TIF? Why do we need the 100% exemption? The CRA takes the first 15 years of the TIF money. So, there's not going to be any TIF generated for 15 years of this project. The land and the development challenges are existing, and they're very, they, this piece of property has been held for development for over 30 years. And the challenge is to get it developed over that timeframe are the site, and it make it very hard to develop. That's why the city's stepping up to encourage this development. We have a tight supply of housing, like most communities. We are, you know, we have a huge demand for houses here in the city of Forest Park. This will be a high-quality new development and allows step-up housing for existing residents because we don't have that type of housing in a broad spectrum. We do have it, but it's not available all the time. And the TIF is just a good risk-reward presentation. We hope to be able to create a nice subdivision here for our community and a place for our citizens to, who have put down roots and want to stay in Forest Park, an option for them to continue to live in the community that they've grown accustomed to. So, be glad to answer any questions. I know there's more about the TIF that you want to talk about, but I wanted to at least touch on the project and some of the things that are going on with it.
Thank you so much for your presentation. I just have a couple comments, maybe a couple questions. So, the Blue Ocean Group are the primary developers?
Yes.
So, Nyer is, what is, how is his involvement?
He's a partner in helping to bring it to market. These are the developers, are the Blue Ocean Group. Nyer is a minor partner to help with the financing.
With the financing, okay. Okay. And also, you talked earlier about site clearing has already taken place. And so, I was a little confused because you said at the beginning, without the TIF, you could not go, move forward.
Yes.
So, I'm just wondering, you're moving forward with the clearing of the property, but are you waiting for a decision from us as it relates to the TIF to move any further?
Yes.
Is that what you're saying?
Yes. The site clearing was allowed. They asked, they were on a, it was an accommodation to the developer.
Okay.
That's a small, the clearing of the site, basically, they've knocked down the trees. I hate to say that, but that's what they did. And they prepared, they have not done any extensive dirt movement. It's going to require an extensive amount of cut and fill in this particular area. They did begin the demolition of the trees, and some of the financing that was available fell through. And so, they've kind of put the project on hold until we can come up with, that's where the city's stepping up now. You know, they had some port financing that didn't come through, and the city's stepping up to try and help. Whether we issue bonds ourselves, or we do loans, or some sort of public financing is going to make this thing happen. The cost of money is just too expensive on the private side. So, in order for us to make this feasible, we have to move forward. But again, we did allow them to begin the demolition portion, which is just basically the clearing of the site. But without the financing plan that's in place, that continues to be developed, quite frankly, this project will not go forward. It requires, there is a big gap, and TIF is the request to fill that gap.
Okay. And so, you went to the maximum of what you could, the 30-year is the maximum and 100% is the maximum.
Correct.
So, are you indicating that if you want any lower on the years or the percentage, you would not be able to accomplish this project?
Well, we've, this is a twofold request, obviously. It's the schools, the county, and the city. Threescore, if you count the city. The city's already committed, if we pass this TIF ordinance, the city's committed to 100%, the same that we've asked the county to commit to. So, our 18% of your tax bill is going to go toward this. Again, it's new money, it's not existing money. So, the city's committed to that 30-years 100%. We're asking the county to commit to the 30-year 100%. And we've asked the schools to commit to 30-years 75-25, so 75%. Again, the majority of this money doesn't flow for 15 years, so we're really only talking about a 15-year TIF in terms of cash flows available for the, there'll be cash flows related to the cost and the improvements of the land, but the majority of the TIF money will not be generated until years, actually way out into the years, because you're talking about a seven-year build-out in terms of starting, finishing the road, getting the lots together, and getting the houses up. So, we're going to lose, you know, several years of TIF at the end because of the potential build-out. We think it'll be built out quicker, but the estimates right now, again, they're real conservative, are seven-year build-out. So, you end up, you know, if a house is built in year seven, we've only got, it's not a rolling TIF. It's only going to be, at least that's my understanding, it's only going to be 22 years, and the first 15 years of that are going to be in the CRA. So, we're really only looking at about eight years of TIF money.
Thank you. So, when I read the initial proposal, I thought there was a recreation center component.
Well, we've talked about, the question is, part of our overall strategy in the city of Forest Park is, yes, we're going to, we're going to TIF areas, multiple areas, industrial, commercial. Some of these will be this TIF model, some of them will be others. We've done the regular that we can do, you know, 75-25 for 10 years, some of those TIF But we're trying to create a cash flow stream that we can point toward public infrastructure improvements. Now, any excess money that this generates first would go toward the development of the road surrounding it, because this is going to have a huge impact on the Waycross and Lincolnshire and some of the streets around there. So, we want to make sure that we've got those streets taken care of for the citizens who are there right now. But we're also, if there is excess money, we plan on using that for a community center. We're the largest community in Hamilton County that does not have a community center. And we're trying to get plans together so we can create revenue through TIF money to build a community center for our citizens. Now, that's only if there's excess. We also have to remember that part of this is protecting the community of Forest Park. If we issue the bonds or be able to protect the bondholders as well, because we may have to pledge this, depending on how we finance it. It would be a GEO pledge that the city has to enter into, which is very unusual. The city does not have any GEO debt right now. So, this would be a step forward. Trying to impart to you the commitment on the city's part to trying to make this happen. But we also have to protect ourselves and protect our citizens. So, we want to make sure that if the market goes away from us and we only get 50% build-out, or we only, or maybe we get 100% build-out and some of the folks can't pay their TIF money. And statistically, that will happen. You know, people will not pay their taxes. That's just going to happen, and it's going to affect the cash flow. So, we want to make sure that we have a revenue stream that we can pledge that will be sufficient to cover the debt service that we need. And if there's a shortage, we want to make sure that we account for that. And you're right, theoretically, if this thing goes 100%, which we think it will, there will be excess TIF money. But we're telling you that if we have excess TIF money, number one, it's going to protect the city from what if it doesn't go well. So, we need that protection. But if we do have that excess TIF money, again, it's going to be way out into the future. We plan on using that toward a community center or some other public facility that the city needs.
So, I would think you would need a tremendous excess to think about building a recreation center. So, as I think about the excess, the possibility of reducing your request, if you're, you know, you said if you're short, you can't do this, but if you think you would have enough excess to build a recreation center, that's quite a bit of money.
We don't believe we would have enough access from this particular TIF at all to come close to building a rec center. This is a piece of a revenue stream that we would want to put together from other city funds, state funds, private funds, as part of a capital funding project to help build a community center. This will not throw off excess funds. Actually, because they're in the years 15 through 30, the majority of them, a lot of them years 20 through 30, the present value of that is literally a third or less. So, you know, if you throws off $3 million, we'd be lucky to have $1 million of construction proceeds today, and that's at lower interest rates. Who knows what the interest rates will be in the future? So, no, it's not, it's not going to throw off sufficient funds to build a community center.
So, my last question is, the cost of the homes, the new development? What is the average cost, are you thinking?
With the lots, they're looking around $400,000, 350 to 450 probably. I think we've used 400 in our model.
Okay. Okay, that'll, thank you. Commissioner Dreehouse.
Thank you. Thank you for being here, and thanks for the presentation. Just a couple of questions. So, I don't know if it was in the slide presentation, but what is the total cost for the project?
Total cost of the project right now is $4.3 million. That includes all hard-earned soft costs.
Okay. And then, you talked about the city being all-in on this. So, do you have an estimate of how, what that dollar amount represents from the city's side?
Well, the dollar amount is the TIF money, the special assessment money, and our financing that going on the hook with the GEO pledge in case there's a shortage.
So, do you have, though, an assessment or an estimate of what the value is of the TIF that the city will be engaged with? I mean, can you?
Yes, we do. I just don't have that with me right now.
Okay.
We've, I think we supplied that to the county, a spreadsheet from our financial advisor, Bradley Payne, and they're redoing new numbers, actually, as we speak, based on current estimates in terms of interest rates. So, we'll be glad to provide those to the county.
And Madam President, Commissioner Dreehouse, so we received some spreadsheet of information yesterday from Forest Park, so we'll put that together. If the question is, what is the city's contribution versus what is the contribution from other funding sources, we can provide that to the Board either later today or tomorrow.
Yeah. I just want to get a kind of an estimate of that.
Yeah, I mean, that's throwing off, the city's portion, again, of the TIF funds is about 18 to 20%, same as the county's. Schools would be around almost 60. So, that's kind of the breakdown in terms of percentage-wise. Again, this doesn't happen without their participation either, and that's not a given yet either. So, it's still early. The Board will be meeting, and the developers will be speaking with the Board of, the School Board, to discuss this project with them. They've already preliminary discussed it with the Superintendent and some of his staff, but again, just like you, they have to make a decision on it as well. So, we have not had a yes or no from the School Board yet.
Okay. One other question. So, I'm sure that throughout this process where you've put all this together and you've garnered the support of the city for the project, can you help us understand what kind of community engagement was done? And I'm assuming there's community support for the project, but could you talk to us a little bit about that?
Well, we've had to rezone the property. So, there were at least, I believe, two public hearings to talk about it, and it really was discussed significantly at our zoning boards. The original, this happened in two phases. There was significant participation. I can probably give you the, I can give you the amounts of people that we believe were there. The first one was bigger, and when I say the first one, this started out as, I'm going to call it a two-phase development. Phase one was a long Waycross, which was the easy part, and that was a different developer. But it had the same types of planning, and so that had, you know, several, it filled up our meeting room, which is at least this big. So, that went through the first phase, and then we had the second phase, which, again, brings the road to the back of phase one, and that had the same type of participation. So, we, you know, people in the neighborhood were notified, and there was a pretty good discussion about it. So, that was basically our input in terms of, the input we received from the citizens were at those public hearings.
So, was the majority supportive?
I believe so. I think it was unanimous. I could get you the vote. The Planning Commission, obviously, took into account the public and their ideas and their input. So, yes, I think it was pretty much in positive and in favor of the building of the new homes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Vice President Reese.
Thank you, and I apologize, I didn't get to see your whole presentation. I was coming from a hospital with a family member, so apologize for that.
Hope they're okay.
Yes, they are. Thank you. I didn't leave until I knew that part. Just wanted to just go back. I am familiar with TIF districts and your comments. There seems to be with this project, there's a lot of unknowns, obviously, based on the marketplace, the housing market, et cetera. And I know that as a board, we have really kind of focused on having, making sure that there's some affordable components in future projects that are coming before us. But I wanted to go back to your reliability on the TIF component and your statement saying that, you know, people might not be able to pay their taxes, so we might not have the TIF. So, then, what happens to the project?
Well, what we would do in terms of our modeling, and this is some of the modeling that we're getting today or tomorrow, whenever Andy sends it to us, we're doing some sensitivity analysis on it. So, we've, the original program that we sent was 100%, assuming everybody's going to pay their taxes, and then we're going to get all the money that this, that it would generate. Obviously, we know that even in a perfect world today, in any district, in any neighborhood, any street, you're going to find- any street, you're going to find a certain percentage of folks just aren't able to pay their taxes, and they're going to be delinquent. So that's either going to be some sort of a... Normally, that's, depending on how that ends, at least it's a cash flow issue. It could be delayed cash flow. But we're looking at modeling that. It's probably 5%. That's a bigger number than it is statistically, I believe. And then we're looking at what's the build-out. So if it's not 100% build-out, if they don't sell all the lots, we're assuming there's going to be 64 homes. What if there's only 50? What if there's only 40? So we're looking at a 75% and a 50% and figuring out where our break-even is, where we can still go forward. But that's our concern. If we're going to be providing the financing to build the road and all the other infrastructure, then we need to make sure that there are sufficient cash flows to guarantee that the city is not at risk, or at least significant risk. And so we can't assume 100% build-out, and we can't assume 100% payment over the life of whatever financing vehicle we use.
Got you. In this area, is there already houses there? And I apologize, you already covered this, but...
Well, there's housing... There's no housing there, obviously. It's old forest.
Right, but I mean, around it.
Oh, yeah. The first section... Let me go back or forward. There you go. The blue section, you can see way across, across the top, the blue section has housing. And of course, across the street has housing. So there's housing on both sides of the street plus everywhere. This is a residential neighborhood.
Right.
This would be... The yellow section would be the new section. The blue section is relatively new. The part there was 16 homes built there as phase one. I call it phase one because we think of it as phase one. Those things sold out very quickly, I think, within three months. And they're finishing up now because of the COVID kind of slowed them down in terms of the construction. But all of those lots have been sold in the first phase, and they have homes on them right now.
Okay. Yeah, I think that's the area. I saw those new houses.
Yeah, that's right. It's right behind that.
Yeah.
So it would be...
Really nice, actually.
Yes, it's a nice area, and it's going to have nice wooded lots. It abuts Wynton Woods' property, at least in the backside. So that should... And we're talking with... You can see some... Again, we're not going to speak for this, but these are some of the things that we've used internally. You can see some bike paths or walking paths through there, an extension of Wynton Woods' walking paths we proposed for that area as well. So we'll be working with them to extend all those walking paths. So this would be a nice area when it's done. Again, we just want to make sure that, you know, that we don't overextend ourselves from a city standpoint, that we have enough revenue that we can rely upon to pay the bill, pay the debt service. And if we have extra, that's a good thing. But we don't want to be short.
Right. I just was wanting to know, too, the existing houses. We don't have this. We have to be able to pull this, what you talked about. I know a lot of people are struggling with property taxes. I'd like to know, is that area one of them?
No.
Okay, so they're good with that. And then you have on here, there'll be a new community authority?
The CRA? There is a CRA there already.
NCA?
No, there's not going to be an NCA there.
I got that in a report from the administrator, something about an NCA?
No, there's...
A spreadsheet form?
Oh.
TIF service payment and other sources of revenue respected for the project.
Oh, there'll be a guaranteed service payment that we're going to try and require from the developers, again, but that puts their credit on the line as well.
Got it. Okay. All right. Thank you.
But you bring up a good question as it relates to the housing in that area, and I was just thinking, I know exactly where that is, and there's no displacement of any houses there. But there's some... That's my favorite street, Way Cross, actually. So with the rezoning, there's still no displacement. And the other thing, as you were saying, new housing has not been done in so long, until recently. So that's another good reason to look at the options, so.
Yeah, I mean, literally, we are moving forward with probably in the next couple of years, over 400 units infill. And we'll be back here to talk to you again because these sites are challenging, and they've been left, you know? Because they are challenging, and they require public input and probably public financing to get them done at rates that people can afford today because the rates are just so high to get money.
And those certainly are not the average home...
No.
Well, I don't know now, the average home prices. But I want to guarantee that the ones that have... Families that have been there for 30, 35 years, they can stay in their homes, and we just kind of build around them a little bit, so.
Yeah, we're not displacing anyone. This actually is some of our... Again, we're working with the county to have this housing study. But we've had some other input. I'll just say that that's one of the concerns that people have lived there a long time is there's just no place to go when they get older. And some of these homes, you know, now, these are bigger homes, but also, you know, you might buy the... We're hoping that these free up the affordable homes. You know, the first owner coming in, you're young, you've got a young family, you can buy a nice house, nice brick home in a great community, put your roots down. And then as you progress in your career, we've got move-up homes. And then as you get to the point where you're going to retire, we've got another development that has those types of homes. And then we've got some, I call them row houses, but anyway, in another development that are, you know, we're attracting the younger buyers. So we think we're trying to... We're using this housing strategy to grow our population and attract new and different homeowners and keep the existing ones we have.
So the property right across the street there, is that still owned by Cantor? Is that Cantor property? Because that...
No, I don't think Cantor owns any of it. No.
But that's another area where development can happen, for sure.
Yes, exactly. We're looking at the Cameron Park area. We have 100 homes going in there, and some other areas as well that you would know about.
Madam President?
Yes.
Real quickly, just for clarification. I think the NCA, that is one of the standard questions that we actually ask townships and municipalities. So I think we asked Forest Park and any other community that would come in for a TIF to describe in detail the sources of revenue that will accrue to the project. For instance, is there TIF financing? Is there a JED? Is there NCA financing? That type of thing. So that was one of the questions we actually asked. But the response was that it was primarily CRA, special assessment, and TIF.
Yeah, those are the primary sources of revenue, plus developer input. And hopefully, the city doesn't have to come out of the general fund for any of this. But those are the primary sources that we have to pledge.
Okay. Well, thank you so much. Come again.
Thank you. Well, we will be back, at least four more times.
Right. Okay, thank you so much. We're going to move forward. Our next item on the agenda is a resolution to adopt recovery-friendly workplace practices. Hello, Megan.
Hello. Hello, commissioners. Good afternoon. Megan Gosny, County Administration. I'm very excited today to introduce the Hamilton County Public Health Team that has been assisting the Hamilton County Addiction Response Coalition Business Committee. In 2020, when we changed our name from the Hamilton County Heroin Coalition to the Addiction Response Coalition, we also formalized two other additional committees, aside from the four that we originally founded on, to also include the Business and Faith Communities. So the business community has been hard at work to incorporate more recovery-friendly workplace practices, as well as just educate the business community, as well as work on different workforce development projects. So I'm excited to introduce Shawna Merrick and Tyler Meenick from Hamilton County Public Health to talk about the Recovery Friendly Workplace Initiative. I also wanted to mention, sort of as a side note, that we're very excited, especially from Addiction Response Coalition, that we do have an administrative employee on the Quick Response Team who's celebrating her eight-year anniversary in recovery today. So it's perfect timing for this initiative. So I'm going to turn it over to Shawna and Tyler.
Thank you, Megan. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Shawna Merrick. I'm the Division Director for Hamilton County Public Health. And thank you so much to the Board of County Commissioners for your support through this initiative. I only wanted to talk very briefly about kind of where this sort of came from, which we... So the Division of Harm Reduction is only three years old. And as we were growing and we had vision and we had goals, we knew how critical it would be to addiction and recovery support to have employer engagement. And that is where this came from, this idea. So we took the time to hire the right person, and Tyler Meenick is that person. And he became our primary architect for this designation that allows this partnership of safety, health, and wellness between employers and employees and public health. So it strengthens our community. And I would like Tyler to be the one to talk about all the amazing things he's created for us.
Thank you, Shawna. Thank you, Megan. And thank you all for having me here today. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So I'm going to jump right into it. As Shawna indicated, we're promoting the Recovery Friendly Hamilton County Initiative. And we are based on a model that has its roots in the state of New Hampshire, which began in the year 2018. It was actually an issue that was put forth by their governor, Governor Chris Sununu, who's still their current governor. And what he decided was he needed to do something for the state of New Hampshire to really improve the workplace for people who struggled from substance use disorder. He was a former businessman himself. He actually ran a ski lodge, and he saw directly the economic and human impact that addiction has on that state. Since then, it's been such a popular initiative that it has taken root across the country in a lot of different states, counties, and municipalities. You can see on the slide on the right-hand side that there are some indications of different areas where it's taken a foothold. And it's gotten so popular that they actually have one person in their administrative staff with the state of New Hampshire, who her sole role is to help us get off the ground, help other states get off the ground, help other counties get off the ground who want to go forward with this initiative. So the underlying philosophy, I'm going to read this over here, is recovery-friendly workplaces support their communities by recognizing recovery from substance use disorder as a strength and by being willing to work intentionally with people in recovery. Recovery-friendly workplaces encourage a healthy and safe environment where employers, employees, and communities can collaborate to create positive change and eliminate barriers for those impacted by substance use disorder. We were actually having a conversation in the office today, and I know I would bring it up here. With all of the funding that's out there to address the current opioid crisis and substance use disorder, we really think it's important that more of it go towards the workforce because the statistics show that 75% of people with a substance use disorder are a part of the workforce. And this is where we spend our time. This is where we spend our alert waking hours. So if we're going to reach people, it's important that we reach them in the workplace as well as well as outside of the workplace. So in terms of what we intend to offer, I'm going to go over these things briefly. Number one is linkage to care. So with the initiative, we're actually requiring all of our designees to post in their facilities, information about resources that are available in Hamilton County. All of these are available to the public, but we're promoting them in ways that they haven't been promoted before, such as Addiction Services Council and United Way, as well as additional online services. And the nice thing about these posters is that they have unique QR codes where employees can scan them to get anonymous information, and we can actually track how many people are using those QR codes on a yearly basis to be able to communicate that data back with the employers. So again, just an anonymous avenue for employees to seek support. Even if a company does have an EAP, it's just another anonymous avenue that they can pursue if they're looking for treatment. Training and consultation. So we have some built-in trainings at Hamilton County Public Health, such as signs to look for for substance use disorder, trauma-informed care and practices. And with consultation, I don't claim to be the guru on recovery-friendly practices, but thankfully, because of the dense connection I have with all of these other RFWs across the country, if an employer has questions that I can't answer, I'm able to reach out to one of my national colleagues, if you will, to get an answer for them. Recruiting. So one thing that's really exciting is we're working with the Workforce Innovation Center, which is a leg of the Chamber of Commerce. We're going to be using a part of their job development, not their job development board, but rather their job board, to allow our designees to signify their recovery-friendly status. So if they're looking to recruit directly from the recovery community, they have an avenue to do that. We're also going to post information about their jobs on our website once that gets further developed. We also want to have job fairs, so hopefully, that'll come down the pipeline as well. With policy resources, big disclaimer, I'm not a lawyer, so I'm not here to make any mandates about companies changing their policies. We just provide insight on some progressive policies that already exist with recovery-friendly employers, and we get them connected with the resources that can help them actually put those in place. Designation, which is really exciting. When a business comes on board, if I can find it, we are formally designating them as a recovery-friendly employer in Hamilton County. This is our logo with our branding. So they'll be able to display that in their windows, both for the public as well as for their employees. And the overarching goal of this initiative is really to promote anti-stigma for recovery and addiction because people in recovery are amazing. They make tremendous employees, and there's a lot of statistics that actually favor them over the average employee. So that's one thing that we're really looking forward to. Wraparound services, just promoting or rather cross-promoting some of the things that Ohio Means Jobs already does that employers may not be otherwise familiar with, such as CARES Act, ERAP money, and the like. Harm reduction supplies, obviously, with Hamilton County Public Health, we can distribute in a lock zone, and we are getting businesses connected with that if they want to improve their company's first aid kit, particularly if they're in an area where overdoses are happening quite often, or if they're concerned about what may occur in their workplace or on their premises. And then cost-saving connections. Talbert House has a connection with the Bureau of Workers' Compensation to get employers reimbursed up to 100% for doing things like drug testing for people in recovery, policy amendments, as well as training on substance use disorder and recovery. So we hope to make those connections for businesses who are not otherwise familiar with that program. So in order to join the initiative, it's not just as simple as a workplace saying we're recovery-friendly. We do require a bit of skin in the game. So there are some things that they have to do to come on board with us. First, they have to send me a letter of intention indicating that they understand what the initiative entails and that they have values that are similar to ours when it comes to the fight against substance use disorder and promoting recovery. That's signed by somebody in HR or senior management. Second, and probably the most important, is the declaration of commitment to employees. We have standard templates for both of these, so we're not requiring anybody to reinvent the wheel here. But with the declaration, they have to openly declare to their employees that they are becoming a recovery-friendly employer and that they encourage people to come forward if they need assistance, and just broadcasting where they can find those resources on the premises. I have to be given proof of that in order for it to pass, so whether that's copied on an all-staff email or actually CC'd on some meeting minutes or anything like that, any channel that they use to communicate with their employees most readily. Third, like I brought up earlier, these posters, they actually have to be posted on the premises for each of our work sites. I can tell you that Talbert House is in the process of coming on board, and if you know anything about them, they've got quite a few work sites. So that's going to be a bit of work distributing those, but they are going to be required to put them up in all of their sites. And then lastly, HR or senior management has to undergo a brief orientation with me just to know what the full scope of our services are, what we can and cannot do, so that they can reach out in the future to solicit those services if they please. And then once a year, in order to stay designated, and again, we just started, we're not at our year mark yet, but we are going to require that those companies remind their staff about any existing alcohol, tobacco, and other drug policies that they have. That can be accomplished in something as simple as an email blast. And then likely, they're going to remind their staff about recovery-friendly Hamilton County through a similar means. And that is the scope of recovery-friendly Hamilton County. So thank you all so much for having me, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Sure. Thank you for the presentation. As we look at all the services that we offer, what about cost? How are the costs covered to provide some of this?
Yeah, so we are funded by the CDC and my division, and there is no cost to join the initiative. We may get employers connected with resources such as those that help with policy revision as well as training, different vendors that offer that. But it's not required that they utilize those services. And if they do, through that Bureau of Workers' Compensation program, it's entirely likely that they'll be reimbursed up to 100% for those things. But in terms of joining the initiative, there is no cost associated with it.
And I would just add that the sustainability of this is really through public health, has been through staffing, and that we are using the existing partnerships and existing services in our community to just ensure their access.
Okay. Okay, great. Okay, okay, great. I think this is a great program.
Thank you.
As you say, we all come to our workplace with certain issues and illnesses. And work is just a microcosm of our entire life. But if we can tell people, when they come here, and we're having trouble with hiring people and getting more people on, if they know we are a friendly workplace, maybe they will hopefully feel more comfortable coming here. So I think this is a great initiative.
Thank you, thank you. And that's the angle that I promote with the businesses that I onboard, is it really does demonstrate versatility in a very difficult market, which is what we're facing right now in this country.
Yeah. Vice President Reese.
Thank you for the presentation. And certainly, I think it's something good. Provide almost a toolkit for the businesses because there are some businesses that want to do it but may not know exactly how.
Right.
So I think the toolkit is great. Are you also working, I know you work mostly with the businesses, but also our reentry program? Because certainly that helps with those who are recovering and want to get back into the workplace. So I thought this might be a good.
Yeah, of course. Are you referring to ODRC, the Ohio Department of Realization and Corrections? That kind of reentry?
Trina Jackson, our director here, right downstairs. I'm sure she's part of it, but I'm saying it's all pulled the pieces together from the employer's side to the employee's side. It kind of helps the loop because we do a lot of training and get people back in, and we work with them, she works with them. But then we want to make sure that they can connect with employment. And having an employment-friendly environment, I think, helps target that these companies have a friendly environment. And these are some places that you may want to go and be employed with.
I agree.
We don't have a formal partnership, but I do think with this resolution, this helps to solidify and move us in that direction to, because that's what we're hoping, is that we're building this foundation in our community.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Drehouse.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I'm very excited about passing the resolution today. You know, I do want to recognize that the germ of some of these conversations happened with the Business Committee at HCRK. We went and visited Nehemiah, which is a business that really is living this every day. And they have been since their inception. And 100% of their employees have re-entered the society from the Justice Center or other institutions like that. And they are providing supports on-site, at their own expense, to make sure that those employees have what they need by way of support as they continue through their own recovery. And the idea here was that not every business has the capacity to do that. And so how do we promote this amongst all businesses with the recognition that supports exist in the community? And they don't have to have that particularly on-site, but rather provide the information to their employees so they have access to that support. And so I think that is in large part where some of the origins of this came from. And Public Health, to your credit, picked it up and ran. And here we are and are now promoting this countywide for businesses to adopt. I think that it really represents, what we've talked about a number of times, is a cultural shift in the county where we are doing everything we can to be as welcoming as possible to a large group of individuals that may want to work here. And so this is yet another example of how we are embracing our workforce and providing what they need, not only to come here, but to stay here and work within the ranks of the county. So I think it's a wonderful initiative. I'm very proud of it. I'm proud of the partnership with HCRK and Public Health. Public Health sits on HCRK, as does reentry. And so Trina has been part of these conversations as far as the inception goes with the business community and the faith community and the other representatives from HCRK. And so, Meg, and I shout out to you for helping to spearhead this as well. So I'm very excited. And my expectation, or I think the assumption is we're going to pass it today, is that correct?
Oh, great.
Okay, thank you.
Correct. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
The resolution is somewhat long. We've already talked about what the resolution is about. But I certainly would like to read the first three whereas. And this is Resolution Number 26, a resolution to adopt recovery-friendly workplace practices. Whereas on August 31, 2021, House Resolution 617 declared September as National Recovery Month by the 117th Congress. And whereas our country's addiction crisis continues to have a substantial and significant impact on Hamilton County. And whereas an estimated 454 Hamilton County residents died of a drug overdose in 2021, and an increase of 122% since 2012, where Hamilton County witnessed over 204 overdose deaths. Now, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 26.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Adumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. We will move forward. And this is, again, another first from this board. Never happened before, so. Okay, our first item, John Brugan is here for our budget presentations.
Hello, Commissioners. We're thrilled to be coming into the final day of budget presentations from our departments. We have six here today. And we're ready to get them started. I will note that we've changed things up a little bit in that we have asked Leslie to set the timer for 15 minutes just to keep us a little bit on track. But we're not going to need that at all today, are we?
Thank you. So coming up first is from the Prosecutor's Office, Kathy Bailey and Joe Huster, Huster?
Yes, that's it.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to talk about our budget, even if it's briefly. On the first slide, it basically is a history of our spending of recent years. We've been fairly steady. You can see a little bit of a decline in 2020. That was due to, that was the COVID year, where we eliminated approximately 18 positions to help with the overall issue with funding. 2021, we're just coming out of that with our staffing at that level. And in 2022, same staffing level as we had ended '20 with. Very small increase. And then 2023, the increase there is essentially due to a request for a, I would say, a significant, at that point in time, COLA increase. Knowing what was going on with the economy at that point in time, I had put in the budget a 10% cost of living to be reviewed and everything else. Subsequent to that budget being submitted and due to the problems we've had with staffing, attracting and retaining, as is common with other county departments and with overall economy, Mr. Dieters wanted to implement a study of our own to see how competitive we were with some surrounding counties and primarily with Cuyahoga and Franklin, who are two other urban counties similar in size to ours. Based upon that, we were looking to implement a salary upgrade with the numbers that you will see in the second slide that's up there now. And essentially, as far as the budget goes, that is our main issue and only issue. Were 97, almost 98% staffing costs. So other than that, and actually, our non-personnel costs have declined a little bit from last year, insignificant in relation to our total budget, but nonetheless. So that's essentially our main issue and our only issue. And if, you know, you have any specific questions, we'd be happy to entertain this.
Thank you so much. I see you have new employee requests on here also. But my question was, as it relates to vacancies, how many, what's the percentage of vacancies?
Well, currently, right now, we have six prosecutor vacancies. That's fluctuating throughout the year, but it's been pretty steady. We are having trouble, as I said, number one, attracting and retaining. We are losing, we have lost this year a decent portion of people in our middle range, which is, really has a big impact because those are people that are experienced. And yet, we expect them to be around to handle bigger issues as they gain more experience. The other end of it is bringing in people. As you can see by the graph up there, though that was up there, we were significantly lower, or we are significantly lower, than Cuyahoga and Franklin, and even Butler to some extent, with just our starting salaries.
So when you look at the vacancies, is that inclusive of your increase that you're asking for? If you filled those six vacancies?
Yes, that's all-inclusive of a full staff level, correct.
Thank you so much. Vice President Reese.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. And did it get, did get a chance to get an update with you all? And our administrator, Jeff Aludo. And one of the questions I know that we're seeing, not just with this department, but we're seeing Franklin County coming up a lot. And I know I asked the administrator because, you know, they're having a lot of, their starting salaries are just like way up there. And we're seeing it with a lot of, we keep hearing it, that's kind of a running theme. And you said you were going to check into some stuff. Can you tell us about that? I know that doesn't apply to Butler and I guess Cuyahoga. I'm interested in the Butler part too. But the Franklin County is the one that's just really jumping out there. And.
Yeah, and so we're looking into it to some degree. Obviously, don't have a complete story to tell yet. But, you know, obviously, every county is different in terms of how they go about funding their general government. I believe up in Franklin County, they actually have a greater portion of their allowable sales tax devoted towards General Fund, where we have a pure, continue to have a half cent that is devoted towards our riverfront and stadium operations. I don't know that with that, we have 1.25 dedicated, 0.75 to the General Fund, 0.5 on the riverfront. I believe proportionately Franklin has more than, more than we have going towards the General Fund. So that's, that's one reason. But I don't know if that explains everything. I think it's, it's every county, there's a different story in terms of how they go about funding things. But we're continuing to look through some past reports that we had pulled together through a study that we did with the CBC, which attempted to benchmark the finances of us versus other counties to see if we can discern anything specific for you, Commissioner.
Got you. Thank you. They don't have the stadiums.
If I may add, Commissioner Reese, to Jeff's comment, Franklin County just completed a formal study through Clements Nelson. I think it happened in July. So depending upon what data they used, they're obviously the most recent one to do that. Cuyahoga, I got that information directly from their HR person. He didn't indicate that they had done a formal study recently. But I know that when we compared salaries last year to them, these are upgraded salaries for them than they presented to us last year. So somewhere along the lines, they did an adjustment also since last year, since 2021.
Got you. And can you tell me, when it says monitor the Justice Center communications, what is the Justice Center communications?
Well, I.
Just curious, I didn't know what is that.
I'm going to, I'm going to read something that was presented to me because this was prepared by the people who really understood that process. I'm not involved in a lot of the things over there, other than the budget and finance stuff. But we requested four new paralegal positions that will review all jail communications of felony offenders with a focus on the violent felony offenders. Since 2020, and with the onset of the pandemic, there's been a significant increase of access to technology for jail inmates. When the county switched to the Securus platform, the inmates were given the ability not just to make jail calls, but to e-message people outside of the jail and make video calls. The use of these communications have increased since the jail has stopped permitting in-person visitation. Beyond the new technology, inmates are also now permitted to make calls at all times throughout the day. The increase in communications has made it impossible for our prosecutors to monitor inmate communications effectively. Additionally, we have been informed by law enforcement there are numerous examples of inmates attempting to identify witnesses while on video calls and visits. Many prosecutors have found incriminating or threatening messages or communications or have been able to locate key pieces of evidence as a result of these communications. However, the volume is such that without these new paralegal positions, there is a distinct risk to the community if these messages are not appropriately monitored. In summary, the new paralegal positions will be tasked with monitoring jail calls, email messages, and video visits to assist our felony prosecutor on their cases.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you.
Madam President, if I could just briefly, on that point, to Madam Vice President's question, we've talked at the Prosecutor's Office about this particular request and presuming this moves forward in the budget, that because of the nature of how the workload accrued, that there is likely the ability to offset some of this funding with ARPA staffing funding, given the, its linkage to the pandemic as well in terms of the additional workload that accrued. So I just wanted to make sure the board knew that at least a portion of this might not hit the General Fund.
That's good information. Thanks, yeah. Commissioner Drehouse.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Appreciate you being here. We have heard this from, I think, every other department throughout the county that we need to pay some attention to market rate when it comes to the salaries that our employees are paid, amongst other things. But salaries are obviously something that keeps someone here and it's helpful as recruiting goes. So I too was interested in the chart and the comparables because we at the county have done this internally. We've done this market rate study, very intentional, about those that we compare ourselves with and against. And so I'm wondering, and I'm, not to be misinterpreted as opposition to this, but to better inform us, I too think Franklin County, they're a bit of an outlier. I mean, they use far more of their sales tax revenue for General Fund purposes, almost double what we have. And so their capacity is different. And so I really do hate the comparison to Franklin County. So would it be possible, I don't know if you've already done this exercise and maybe just not included all the counties that you compared our rates to, but you've got Cuyahoga, you've got Franklin, you've got Butler. Can we get a couple of more counties, you know, Lucas, perhaps, Montgomery, and maybe some of the Warren, you know, Claremont, to give us a better picture of how we are comparing? Because I'm kind of throwing Franklin out of the group, just, and we've done this with other folks as well because it's not really an accurate comparison. But just to help round out the conversation about the increase, I understand the need for the increase. I mean, I too had a pre-meeting and was, you know, we talked through some of this and the need for it. I'm just trying to better understand the degree by which we have the increases. So if you all have done that exercise or could get that information, I think it might be helpful to us as we work through the numbers.
Okay, very well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Unfortunately or fortunately, as we compare Franklin County and Cuyahoga, that's what everybody else compares. So I'd like to be consistent. That's what you guys compared. So if you want to add that additional information, great. But I don't want to do any different than what we did with the other groups. So it sounds like everybody talked to the prosecutors, but me.
Still would like to get the information.
Oh, I told them they can, they can do it. Yeah, fine. But I'll compare the ones that we compared with the other ones. So any additional questions?
Yeah, I just wanted to, I was just looking at these new employee requests. That was a great explanation about that part, about the monitoring because technology is changing and we got to keep up with it. It's tough to keep up with it. But also the backlogs, that we definitely don't want to have backlogs in the courts. And I'm looking at, this would provide an additional law clerk to assist attorneys with their caseloads in the Family Law Division. I know we don't want backlogs anywhere, but obviously there. And then a part-time administrative assistant to help with special projects in the Family Law Division of JFS. And so one of the things we saw with JFS when they presented in terms of the one, I guess, they do the most in, which I'm not particularly happy that that's the only one we're doing the most in. But it had 250-something thousand issues with child support. So I'm sure the Family Law Division. So I'm sure the family law division, obviously that has to be a big caseload for JFS. So this would provide an additional part-time administrative person to assist JFS in the family law division. So just wanted to highlight those. And I think those are some good areas that we have to pay attention to. And then also, this is, I guess, well, I guess that's all that I really had. Actually, I just wanted to know about the new employees and what areas they would be in.
Okay.
Let me ask one other question for clarity. So given your comments earlier, so the two-sheeter that we have with the bar graph related, so the increase that you're referring to is not part of this, correct? There's, there's an adjustment.
The increase for 23?
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, what I would say to that is, what's in that request is essentially 10% across the board, cost of living.
Right.
The, the salary upgrade portion, which is separate from that, that we went ahead and looked at since the submission of the budget, is a 12.8%. So there's the gap there. That would be about a $400,000 difference.
Okay. And could we just get an updated chart? That's all I'm asking for, so we know what we're looking at. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
I'm just wondering, the cost of living, you said it was 10%. Normally, it's about a 3%. So I'm just wondering.
Well, when the budget, when I assembled the budget back in July, inflation was running anywhere from 8 to 10%. So it may be a little lower than that, but I think, I think it's still running about 8, 9% today's market.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President.
You're gonna have to buzz us. We're doing all the talking.
Madam President, just, just a brief, so typically what we'll have is we'll have departments that will put in a cost of living when they submit the budget. We ultimately will normalize for that, and then go back and put in what the board, what we ultimately decide upon for an overall cost of, cost of living.
Okay, thank you.
Can I have one question for clarification? Because we got a lot of, we're doing the all funds budget, but this budget is a little different. They were saying, I guess, yeah, they, something about the judges.
Oh, yeah. So there actually are several departments throughout the county that this relates to, where especially in some of the criminal justice court judiciary functions, including the prosecutor, where the law is that the board sets the budget. Ultimately, if the, if that specific department feels that something different is needed in order to, to run the department, they can go to the Court of Common Pleas and have that, that budget certified by, by the court. So that is a different, obviously, than what occurs in a municipality or township, but is a function of county government.
Gotcha. I just wanted to make sure that was understood.
Yep. Okay, thank you. We have Public Defender's Office, Andrew Lancer. Welcome.
Glad to be here. Good afternoon, Madam President and Commissioners. Like you mentioned, my name is Andy Lancer. I'm the new administrator for the Hamilton County Public Defender's Office. So grant me a little bit of leeway here. This is my first budget hearing with you all. Oh, no, I'm in deep water now. Joining me today is the public defender, Mr. Ray Fowler, and the deputy public defender, Ms. Kathy Ancona. I want to begin by thanking each of you for taking the time today to learn more about our office, as well as providing us a platform so that we can present what we believe are our budgetary needs for next year. And most importantly, we're happy to answer any questions that you may have. Before we dive too deeply into our budget, I'd like to begin by giving a brief description of our office. I'm sure everyone's aware, but the Public Defender provides legal services to indigent individuals who are charged with a crime in Hamilton County, whose punishment may result in a loss of liberty. So to meet this challenge, our office is divided by legal specialty. We have an appellate, a felony, a GAL division, a municipal division, and a youth defense division. That's formerly our juvenile division. We didn't formulate our budget for next year in a vacuum. Instead, we had several pieces of guidance that we were required to use when crafting next year's requests. The first guiding document was a 2022 Mark Stevens report. And this was an assessment of our office performed by the former Knox County, Tennessee, public defender, Mr. Mark Stevens. This report was commissioned by our internal board, of which the Hamilton County Commissioners make three appointments to that board. The report was released this year, and it made several recommendations to improve our office's efficiency, efficacy, and diversity. And those included consolidating our office into one physical location, converting our GAL division into a freestanding office, address staffing deficiencies, in particular among our felony division, and evaluate our salary structure and maintain pay parity with the prosecutor's office and other Ohio Public Defender offices. This report was confirmed and reflected in Mr. Fowler's four-year extension that was given to Mr. Fowler by, again, our internal commission. And it essentially outlined each of those as his goals for the next four years. So our budget overview, when comparing it this year's to last year, we're, we're requesting approval of a budget in which expenses are just north of $28 million. This equates to an increase in budget expenses, expenses in the range of 15% when compared to what was approved last year for this year. The reason for this increase, which I'm sure you've heard several times, is almost entirely due to increases related to employee compensation and additional staff. For next year, we requested $12.2 million in regular employee compensation, and this is an increase from $9.9 million, which was approved for this year. Again, the reason for this request is due to a combination of increased staffing requests and the reality that we must ensure that staff compensation remains competitive in the labor market and is commensurate with both the Hamilton County Prosecutor's Office and our other public defender agencies. So getting to our priorities, again, these priorities were identified in the Mark Stevens report and confirmed by our Public Defender Commission. The first budget priority was, that was identified was consolidate our office into one physical location. Currently, the Public Defender's Office is spread out over two locations, the second and third floors of the William Howard Taft Law Center at 230 East 9th Street, and the eighth and ninth floors of the 125 East Court Street Building. Mr. Stevens cited several reasons for this rationale. One, to improve the administrative capacity and the administrative efficacy of Mr. Fowler in managing all his employees and all his divisions, as well as, as Mr. Stevens wrote, an inappropriate location challenge where our clients are required to meet with their staff, in particular for municipal misdemeanor and felony attorneys, in the same building that the prosecutor's office is in. That's posed somewhat of a challenge for some of our clients. Unfortunately, the total cost of this project is currently unknown. We are in the design phase of this, thanks to a $50,000, approximately $50,000 generous appropriation by you all for design. So we've just completed a space needs analysis through Champlin, and we're processing those results now. Once that is completed and finalized, we will have a much better idea of what that budgeted expense will be to move all of our offices to 125 East Court Street. But wanted to make you all aware of that. The second priority, again, is to separate GAL as a separate county agency. Again, Mr. Stevens' report recommended this. As currently structured, Hamilton County is, is unique among every public defender's offices in the state of Ohio, in that we are the only county agency that has a GAL, or the only public defender's office that has a GAL division under our umbrella. The decision to structure the GAL division this way, I think was made due to financial and administrative expediency at the time. However, it's become apparent, especially recently, that the relationship is becoming increasingly untenable, being that there's several instances of conflicts of interest, interdepartment conflicts of interest, where GAL is repping, representing a client, and our misdemeanor felony or juvenile department or divisions are also representing a client on the same case. Again, these conflicts dramatically reduce both the public defender and GAL's ability to represent our clients effectively and zealously. Mr. Herbert, who's the former administrator with Public Defender's Office and I, in conjunction with the leadership of the GAL, have forecasted total expense for the GAL standalone division, or department. We forecast those expenses to be approximately $4.1 million. And this includes an increase in legal staff, administrative and operational staff, as well as the physical infrastructure and equipment needs required of a standalone office. Now, since we've made this request, there has been additional conversations, both with the Administrator's Office, my office, GAL, and the Ohio Public Defender, about trying to find ways to fund this option. Currently, the Ohio Public Defender reimburses all of our public defender expense 90%. There is funding challenges that the Ohio Public Defender will have, however, in funding a standalone GAL division. So again, this request might need some more time to iron out those options. But again, this is something that is an extreme priority that we could solve sometime in the not-too-distant The next priority is to hire seven additional felony division attorneys and one paralegal. Again, Mr. Stevens, in his report, identified a staffing deficiency within this division. Mr. Stevens believes that the division is understaffed and challenged the office to develop an aggressive recruitment strategy to address it. Internally, we believe that the addition of seven attorneys will meet this challenge. Furthermore, we've performed financial analysis, which compares the cost of a panel or assigned counsel attorneys to that of staff attorneys. And as the slide shows, we believe that there's significant savings by reducing the caseload of our assigned counsel and essentially absorbing those by internal staff. The total associated expense of this request to the general fund, we believe, will be approximately $50,000, or $57,000 after our OPD reimbursement. The next priority we have is our municipal division would like to hire four new social workers. So social workers are an invaluable component to our approach to address the entire needs of our clients. It includes both their legal needs and rehabilitative needs. And to this end, social workers bring to our office specialized training, expertise, knowledge, and probably most importantly, the relationships with our regional partners that our staff attorneys just don't have. Currently, the division has one full-time social worker on staff to assist a group of 37 attorneys. However, the National Association of Public Defense, the leading public defender think tank, recommends one social worker to every three. Obviously, our current ratio of social workers to staff attorneys falls well below this threshold. And although the requested four additional social workers do not meet the recommended staffing ratio, we believe that providing each team of municipal staff attorneys or own dedicated social worker, that will be sufficient to continue the outstanding work being performed by our lone social worker and provide a more robust and rehabilitative service offerings to our clients. The net cost to general fund for this request is approximately $20,000 after OPD reimbursement. Priority number five is similarly, I guess, our youth defense division, formerly our juvenile division, would, is requesting to hire an additional investigator to assist their, their attorneys. Currently, they have a team of 14 staff attorneys, and we have one investigator. With limited resources of a single investigator to 14 attorneys, the staff attorneys are forced to prioritize the cases that utilize those special skills. And it can also limit their ability to investigate the cases, because they're just being pulled in too many directions. Like in the previous requests, the National Association of Public Defense also recommends an appropriate attorney-to-investigator ratio, and they recommend a ratio of three staff attorneys for every one investigator. Here again, the requested one additional investigator does not meet the recommended ratio threshold, and we believe an additional investigator will help move us in the right direction, and again, enable our juvenile attorneys to provide more effective legal defense for our juvenile clients. And then our final budget priority is a department-wide salary increase of 10%. Again, this figure was arrived at based on several factors, which include, included unprecedented consumer inflation, that unfortunately hasn't shown much sign of relenting, and a need to ensure that our office is well-positioned, not only to recruit top talent, but also retain them in an ever-increasingly competitive labor market. So far this year, we've lost 15 staff members, most of them are attorneys. And the reasons are numerous, but that's certainly one of the reasons. And then here's a summary of all of our position requests and the net cost of the general fund for that. I'd like to draw your attention to the state PD and JFS reimburse of $2.2 million. Again, when we submitted this request, we submitted under the assumption, or the intention that the JFS levy would pick up the expense of the juvenile, our juvenile request, or I'm sorry, our GAL request. Again, it doesn't seem like that's going to happen this year, but that's what we submitted. And I'm happy to answer any questions anyone might have about that.
Thank you so much for your presentation.
Yeah.
Very, I think, reasonable request to try to get up to date to the services that we need to provide. I think it's also a great idea to move everybody together on East Court Street. They can come right out of reentry and just walk right across the street there. And so all of those are great recommendations from your committee. And Mr. Fowler, are you the chief public defender? Is that?
Yes, he is.
Okay. I know they kept bringing you up, and then had public defender. I was wondering, were you the chief? Okay, so you're the big guy.
He's the big guy. He technically represents every client of our office, which is where the conflicts of interest come in, in particular, with the GAL division.
Yeah. Well, thank you so much for all you do with public defenders. It's so, so necessary. So thank you so much. I don't have any additional questions or comments. Vice President Reese.
Yes. Thank you for standing up, because you have your picture on here. It's like, you know, he's here, live in living color. And boy, today was interesting. You got the prosecutor and a public defender in the same room.
Right back to back.
I feel like I'm in court, you know? But I do want to also say definitely our public defenders is very important. And I know we were here at the State House, and we were trying to get more money for public defenders, because we don't really get much. But very important for people to make sure they have a fair trial, fair opportunity of what our, our constitution and our country is founded on, innocent until proven guilty. And they have to have good representation. I, I really don't have any problems with your presentation. But I do have a question about, I think it's good with the social workers, and I don't know if that's another area, Jeff, for our ARPA, because I know we're doing some things with mental health. I don't know if it would qualify in that area, that we can maybe utilize some of those funds or some other funds. There might be some funds coming from the levy. I'm not sure.
Madam President, Madam Vice President, we can certainly look into that. Anytime we have a staffing request come forward regarding ARPA, obviously, we've got to look at the Treasury guidelines, et cetera, just to make sure that it fits within the scope and the purpose. But we can certainly take a look at it in terms of these specific positions, and get back to the board and obviously to the Public Defender's Office.
Awesome. Thank you. And you did a analysis on one of your slides, contracting out versus in-house. You want to talk a little bit about that?
Sure. We have, we are limited in our capacity to represent every client who runs- We have, we are limited in our capacity to represent every client who runs through the legal system in our area. So, we rely on a panel of assigned counsel attorneys, appointed counsel attorneys. The state pays $75 an hour for misdemeanor felony cases and $125 an hour for capital cases, and those things, those, those levels are capped after so many hours. The number, the budgetary number for assigned counsel, I believe, is in the range of eight, yeah, 8.1 million dollars. That's how much our office spends each year on assigned counsel. We have, we have every incentive, both from a financial perspective as well as a quality of representation perspective. We believe staff attorneys of the Hamilton County Public Defender's Office provides a much higher level of care and quality than a lot of our assigned counsel attorneys. So, if we can bring those on in-house, those cases in-house, we believe it leads to better legal outcomes for the client, and it will also lead to significant financial savings.
Gotcha, great. Now, you, I know you, I think you said something about it, but I didn't catch it. You keep talking about Mark Stevens said this.
Yes.
And Mark Stee, who is Mark Stevens?
So, Mark Stevens is the former public defender for Knox County, Tennessee. Our office has had a longstanding relationship with him. He's done several evaluations of our office and assessments. He's essentially a, the consultant that the county prefers to use when they're evaluating our office.
I got you.
And I believe if I'm, I'm new, but I believe he's done, he's performed three assessments of our office just since 2014.
Okay, great, because I'm new, and I know people watch and say, who is this Mark Stevens?
Yeah.
Mark Stevenson said this, who is he?
Yeah.
So, that's good, he's a consultant. I do like the consolidation. I think that's a, going in the right direction.
Yeah.
And that building, you said you'll get more information, but currently we pay rent now, don't we?
We do pay rent now for the 125 building. Now, some of, it's reimbursed, 90% of that's reimbursed.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm just saying, so we should kind of know, when you say we're looking into it, we should kind of know what is, what's the cost per square footage?
Yeah.
That they charge over there.
I, we, I have those numbers, I can get them for you. There's a concern after a preliminary assessment that there might not be enough space available at this time.
Gotcha.
So, we're trying to figure out what other options are there, and that will affect, if additional space becomes available, I believe that it's going to affect that price per square foot as we absorb more space in that building.
Gotcha. Because that space, I remember, since I post, took up a lot of, couple floors. I was, that was my second internship there.
Oh, yeah.
And seems like that would be a good, it just makes sense, so hopefully it does work out, but you'll get back with us.
We absolutely will.
When we cross that bridge.
Yeah, like, we, we just completed a space needs. We have a preliminary set of those results that we're going to work through in the next week or two with Champlin and representatives from our office to kind of finalize what the future office reality is at 125 for our office.
And then you said the JAL, can you?
GAL.
GAL, I'm sorry, GAL. Can you explain what that is?
Yeah. Guardian at Lightum provides essentially social worker-related services to juveniles. I probably defer it to Ms. Ancona.
Hi, thank you. Our guardian at Lightum Division employs both attorneys and non-attorney guardian at Lightums.
Yep.
And, I'm sorry, whenever there's a complaint filed in juvenile court that a child's been abused, neglected, or depended by the prosecutor's office, the child is appointed a guardian at Lightum attorney or non-attorney that represents the child's best interest in court. There's a lot of field work that's involved, visiting children in their placements, their, Rule 48 dictates how often the attorneys have to see the clients, so it's a very important, important role. But if you can imagine that we're representing the child as a guardian, there might be a criminal case pending in one of our other divisions that a parent has been charged with a crime that's going to become a feature in the GAL proceeding. So, that's what the conflict is most often.
Gotcha. Thank you, thank you. No further questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Drehouse.
Thank you, thank you for your presentation.
Yeah.
Just a couple of things. So, thank you for reminding us that you have taken this strategy of not going out for outside counsel as much as hiring people internally to make up the difference.
Yes.
And there's a cost savings associated with that. I think we've talked about that in previous budget discussions, so I applaud that strategy and am glad that it's, you know, saving some money because I think that's a good way to go about that. The, and as far as the reimbursement goes from the state.
Yeah.
So, CCAO is fighting for that reimbursement and to get it to 100%. There was some conversation last time I was up there related to the increased salaries for the attorneys for the public defender and how everyone's in the same boat, and we're all in a position where we're increasing salaries because we need to retain people and recruit people. So, I'm going to ask you the same thing I asked to the prosecutor's office. If you've done the comp study about market rate for some other comparable counties, could you provide that to us?
Yeah.
I think it would be helpful, especially as we talk through the need for the state to be at 100% reimbursement, the pushback is going to be, well, it would have been 100%, but you all increase salaries for the attorneys, but comparably, we have to do these things in order to compete and have attorneys here in Hamilton County.
Right.
So, if you could provide us, again, with those comps, and I don't know if you've already done that work or if.
Yeah, we have. We, we run comps with the prosecutor's office annually as well as comps with, I know you don't like hearing it, but Franklin County, Cuyahoga County, the larger, more urban Ohio counties.
So, let me just say, to be clear, I understand how we are comparable to urban counties.
Yes.
Franklin County, however, is an outlier because they have so much more of their sales tax going to their general fund, unlike the other urbans, including Cuyahoga, Montgomery, Lucas, Summit, the others. So, I just want to be clear on this point. So, I think that Franklin included is fine, but to compare us to Franklin always is going to put us lower, always, because they have more, they have more to work with. And I think that when we talk about keeping employees, we often hear that they're going to Warren County or Butler County because they're nearby. So, I think understanding those comps is helpful.
Sure.
And then the comparative set by way of urban counties, I think, is also helpful as you kind of fold them together and then get a really clear picture of where we stand. And so, as we argue the point with our friends at the state level about this reimbursement, I think it might be helpful to have us armed with that comp information so that we can say, well, you know, here's the situation on the ground, and this is what we need to do to make sure that we have a full complement of attorneys in this office.
Understand.
Okay.
We'll get it for you.
Thank you.
Just a couple comments.
Sure.
The 90% reimbursement?
Yes.
How long has that been, 90%?
Since June. It was 100% for the preceding year.
It was 100%.
It was, it was 100% up till June of this year.
Okay. And my other question.
For the previous budget cycle.
Thank you. The guardian at Lightum, for years, was volunteer, and I'm just wondering, how long ago did they start paying? Because I know I was gonna, I was thinking about doing it, but not because it was volunteer, I didn't do it, but I wasn't able to.
I'll defer to Mrs. Ancona once again.
Yeah, I'll try to do this right this time.
Yeah.
So, there are different kind of incantations of it. There is an organization here called Pro Kids.
Uh-huh.
That has both attorneys and what are called CASAs.
Okay.
Court-appointed special advocates, and those are volunteer positions, and they are always looking for people if anyone's interested in applying to be a CASA.
And so, how much do we pay our guardian at Lightums?
I believe our GAL division costs us approximately $3.8 million this year.
You mean, how much an hour, would you say?
They're all salaried, they're, they're salaried employees.
I know they sit.
Yeah, they're full county employees.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you for, yes, uh-huh.
If I could, just real quickly, on that point, I just wanted to thank Mr. Fowler and the Public Defender's Office. This guardian at Lightum issue is a significant structural issue for the county. It's one that obviously, as you heard from Mr. Landrieu's presentation, has a significant impact on operationally on the department in terms of conflict of interest, et cetera, so we want to make sure that gets worked out. But I wanted to just thank Mr. Fowler and his staff for being willing to work with the county. A $4.1 million hit is not something that the general fund certainly has incorporated into its, into its five-year plan, and certainly if we can avoid that hit onto the children's services levy, we would want to do that as well. So, they've, they've been working with us to try to find a way to structure this in such a way that it remains eligible for reimbursement, but as Mr. Landrieu said, this is something that's going to require a little bit more assessment and analysis, so just want to thank Ray and his staff for, for working with us on that, and we'll hopefully bring this to a resolution over the course of the next several months and certainly within 2023.
Thank you. Thank you all for what you do. Yeah, okay. We'll move forward. What's my agenda? Who's next? Okay, the coroner, thank you, Lakshmi Sumarko. Welcome.
Good afternoon. I've got the clicker, apparently. So, you guys are probably all tired of all the talking and everything, but I'll try to be brief.
We're used to it.
We are not. Just wanted to, I have a very short slide presentation, and then I'll open it up for questions. There are a lot of people that don't understand who we are, what we do. So, Ohio Revised Code 313 requires coroners to investigate all unnatural deaths, and I'm not going to read the slide to you, you can read the types of deaths that we do investigate. There are over 4,800 deaths reported on a yearly basis, and we perform nearly 1,600 autopsies, 300 plus being performed for adjacent counties for a fee. The other cases we get called for may require further investigation, not necessarily autopsies, but what are called views, where we'll review medical records, we'll look at the body, examine the body, collect body fluids for analysis, but may not do a full autopsy or may do an abbreviated autopsy. We respond to over 700 death scenes yearly. I did want to correct one figure that I heard earlier today. The final death count, overdose death count for 2021 is 515. So, bit higher when we finally did all of the, all of the numbers. The crime lab performs forensic analysis for 44 different Hamilton County jurisdictions, and we also partner with 30 outside county agencies, including federal agencies. We do that for a fee. The different sections of our crime lab are firearms and tool marks, toxicology, forensic biology, which is DNA analysis, drug chemistry, and trace evidence, which is everything else that you see on CSI or NCIS or everything, when they're looking at fibers to glass to soil, shoe prints, you name it. So, we actually analyze more than 43,000 items in our crime lab a year. 2022, we actually, we opened, that was our first anniversary, was May 2022, in our new building. This is not our new autopsy room, I will have you know, this is our old autopsy room. Wanted to kind of highlight the differences. So, our general fund expenses in 2022 are estimated to be $7.5 million, restricted fund of 313. The request for 2023 is 8.18 with a variance of 670. So, most of our general fund budget, 91% of our general fund budget, is salaries and benefits. And the 2023 request is approximately 8% over the 2022 budget, and you've heard it from everybody else, and I'll say it again, which is, it's salaries, and it's being competitive, and it's very unique talents. So, our pathologists do four years of undergrad, four years of medical school, then they do a three-year residency in pathology, one year in forensic science, have to be board-certified, and so altogether, it's a lot of education, and if they were in a private center, they would be getting paid a lot more. But we do, and we have done, a survey of Ohio, of all the different counties, and we've also asked the Ohio State Coroner's Association to provide us information. We've actually provided them information because they didn't have all of it. We did provide that survey to the budget and HR departments. So, from the crime lab perspective, our employees were under the average by 12 to 22 to 27%. From a forensic pathologist or the physician perspective, the seven physicians in our office other than me, we were 27 to 62% below our adjacent and urban counties. So, I know that we're talking about Franklin County being an outlier. I agreed with you, and last year, that was my attitude, and earlier this year, that was my attitude. And then Franklin County recruited three forensic pathologists away from Cuyahoga County. So, now Cuyahoga County has three vacancies, and they're looking to fill. And so, they increased their salaries so that they would be equal or in the range. Montgomery County had increased their salaries. So, we're looking at that, that 27 to 62% is significant when you're talking about people with special talents that you're trying to retain. And in order for us to do what we do with autopsies for our county as well as for our adjacent counties, we need to have the personnel to do them. The National Association of Medical Examiners restricts the number of autopsies that any physician, any pathologist can do per year. In order for us to stay accredited, we have to abide by their guidelines. So, this is our new autopsy room. We do have eight tables in this room. So, our general fund revenue 2022 was 1.1, restrictive fund is a half a million, and then the budget for 2023 is 1.25 with a variance of 150. So, we have commitments from outside agencies. We're also expecting that we're going to see an increase in referrals, we're already being asked. Recently, we've been working with some jurisdictions in Montgomery County that are asking us to take over some of their forensic analysis. So, some of our challenges for the year coming up, we're going to have to migrate to a new forensic information system, and I cannot tell you how complicated that is because it's the morgue division as well as all the pieces and parts of the crime lab. So, we're going to have to try and get a system that's going to be able to meld the two and still make the information available to the public defender's office as well as the prosecutor's office. Opportunities that we have, we have a $2.1 million active grant funding. We're actually, three of our crime lab personnel are funded through grants right now. We have the capacity to increase autopsy services to our adjacent counties, and again, at a fee. We're also able to provide additional laboratory services to our adjacent counties for a fee. So, having the additional space, the personnel, the talent, and the equipment that we have, and some of our equipment is also funded with grants that we've obtained. So, the restrictive fund pays for the morgue PPEs and all the consumables in the morgue, toxicology and histology consumables, the bio-waste removal, and vehicle and equipment purchases when applicable. So, we're not actually asking for additional people or additional items for, in the budget, but because of the salary increases, we're asking for an increase, 2023. That's all I've got, eight minutes.
Thank you so much, I appreciate your presentation. A couple of questions. The forensic information management system, how much do you think that will cost? Is that something you thought of when you first moved in? You had already figured it in the budget, or can you tell me more about that?
Yes, we, we had already considered that as part of our move-in, so we did.
That's no additional money.
Nope.
Okay. And then you talk about the 300 autopsies that you performed for seven neighboring communities. What, what's the dollar amount, would you say, that would equal, that you, that we've made, the county has made from doing the extra 300?
So, it's $1,600 per autopsy. That's what we charge.
Okay.
And we're actually not allowed to profit from it, we're only allowed to charge our expenses, but that's what we, employee cost, personnel, time cost, the equipment that we use, the overhead, all of that figured in, 1,600. That includes toxicology analysis.
Okay. So, when we talk about the autopsies that we do. Okay. So when we talk about the autopsies that we do, do we also provide like additional training to outside regions? Because I know you guys go to trainings. And so is that part, part of something that we do to generate maybe funding to, to go back into your department?
So we provide educational opportunities for medical students, residents, and fellows from the University of Cincinnati College of Medicine.
Okay.
And that has been in place for at least the 10 years I've been in office. And prior to that, it had been in place for many years as well.
Okay. So do they pay you to do that? Does UC pay?
They, we have a contract with them because of their students being in our office and our, you know, overhead and everything. We, we do have a small stipend that we get from them to, to cover the expenses of having the medical students in the office.
Okay. And I said, lastly, that picture you put in here, I said, that's where we came from. And I said, we have really come a long way.
We have come a long way.
Yeah.
Yes, we have.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Vice President Reese.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I really appreciate it. Yeah, I had a, I was just looking at the question about the $1,600 because I think, like you were saying, inflationary costs and also being able to recruit and retain, as you talked about too, the, the brightest there. Is, do you see that going up any, since we, we've got things cost more, obviously?
We've actually, since I've been in office, we have made increases in that. This last year, we didn't. Montgomery County did significantly and had a pretty big backlash of people going elsewhere. And then they backed off on a lot of their increases. We actually did benefit from some of that, those customers coming to us. We are looking at those numbers and we always do every year. And we will adjust it as, as we think we need to. Again, it is, I hate to call it a business, but it is. I mean, you are serving other counties and it's a matter of being competitive. Also, I don't know if you all understand, the, that forensic pathologists, there are fewer than 400 trained in the country a year. So you can imagine that every coroner's office that has autopsy services is competing to get that talent. And, you know, Columbus is 96 miles away. And so it's hard not to look at Columbus when you're looking at the region. But it's not just Columbus. It's Montgomery County. It's Cuyahoga County. Butler County has very small operations. So we don't really look at them as competing with us for that type of talent. But, you know, they have one or two. So initially, I did the same thing, looked at Columbus and said, wow, that is ridiculous. You know, that's 62% more than we pay our people. And that just seems ludicrous, except then everybody else is looking. And because of that, we did look a little bit more broadly. We looked, a couple of years ago, we looked at St. Louis, we looked at Pittsburgh, we looked at sort of other Midwest cities, and we were definitely way lower in salaries.
Gotcha. What's the, I appreciate that. I know that several things, I guess I could be wrong, but several things you were, I remember you were telling me when we were touring the, our facility, it's very nice, and other things that you incorporated there because you said people are not just looking just to a job. You want to be able to come out and relax. And, I mean, it's a better environment. We were just talking about juvenile court, just the environment. It's just tough to get someone to want to come in that building. But we now have, you're our newest building. Has any, has that helped us or does that help? I know the salary, people want the salary, but also the environment there that they have. They get free parking. Now, there's a lot of perks that we're trying to put out there to put a package together. Have you seen that be helpful?
Yes, absolutely. Actually, we were just talking about that, is that we have been incredibly fortunate to fill every single forensic science position that we have advertised, we have been able to fill. And morgue positions, I mean, there are not a lot of people that want to work as autopsy assistants. And we've been able to fill those positions. And so we have been truly fortunate. And I think the building is part of that atmosphere. Salaries being competitive helps. But really, it's, it's a great atmosphere to work in and it's professional, it's light, it's airy, it's open, a lot of natural light. And we, we hear that from a lot of people. So I think that's made a huge difference because we used to have so much trouble finding people. And firearms people are really, 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 really hard to find. And we have managed to bring two new firearms people in as, as we've lost a couple of people to fill those positions. So we've been very fortunate.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Drehouse. Thank you. Thank you. Just one question for you, coroner, and thank you for your presentation. So when we talked about the new facility, there was, and I think it was highlighted in one of your slides, an opportunity to bring in other jurisdictions, you know, needing your services and then coming to the crime lab to have those services rendered. So I, I saw that your revenue projection, can you help us, and maybe it hasn't transpired yet, but the expectation was that that revenue would increase with the new facility. And so I have no idea if there was any revenue generated in the old facility. I suspect it was low if there was. But can you help us better understand not only what increased revenue you've seen so far with the new facility, but what you expect to happen now that we're post-COVID-ish, you know, and how you expect that to increase?
So we've already seen some, I think I projected 150,000 up there. But just in the last few weeks, I've had three different jurisdictions from Montgomery County approach us to take over. And the largest of that is Dayton Police. So, and that's a huge account. And they're giving us a trial. And every, if everything is, goes well, starting January 1, we will be doing all of their forensic analysis except for DNA, which they'll still have to take to BCI. We're restricted on DNA analysis outside of the county because of a grant that we have. We cannot do DNA analysis outside the county, so we don't. But everything else, I'm expecting them to bring to us. So that's, that's huge. And then a couple of other smaller communities around Dayton. And I suspect that that's going to increase in the next few weeks as people here, where other people are going for their forensic analysis. I suspect that that's going to increase. So do I have a number for you? We're talking about 160 more cases per month on the average. So I don't know. I think we were looking at the actual numbers, but I would actually have to project them out and then maybe send you an email. But we're hoping that that all works out for January 1, start date.
Yeah, I mean, it sounds as though you're becoming a regional facility.
We've always been a regional facility.
For southwest Ohio. Yeah. So I mean, the expectation was always if we build it, they were, they will come. And so I'm just trying to understand not only what's actually happened on that front, but what you project to happen. And so you expect that to increase as you go?
We do, yes. And, you know, that first year of working out the bugs in the building, because it is a new building and it did have bugs. And, you know, we managed to do a lot of that. We had equipment failure, some of our old equipment that we moved, we thought would be okay, had boards that were failing. And then with COVID and the slow boat from China and not being able to get parts, it took a while and, and set us back a little bit on turnaround times. But in order for us to be able to compete for these markets, our turnaround time has to be competitive. And that was something we were struggling with, with equipment failure. But now we're starting to get everything back on track. And so we're, we're feeling really good about a lot more business in the next few years.
Great. And also thank you for your partnership with HCR related to those numbers.
Absolutely.
We all rely on that information.
It's very important.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Next is Treasurer Jill Scheller.
Hi. Good afternoon, Madam's Commissioner. Oh, just dropped my phone. Thank you for having us for our 2023 budget request. We'll be pretty brief. Our general fund request for 2023 is 1.33 million. This is actually 14,600 less than our 2022 budget. The same amount as we requested in 1993, actually.
We need to aplomben.
Thank you. We do have fewer employees, but it is the same amount. We have no new items in the budget request. It's the same. We service 350,000 parcels, collect 1.8 billion dollars each year. You can see some similar, not similar, but neighboring county factors. Nine and a half out of 10 parcels have zero due balance. And we do everything with 21 staff members. Other neighboring counties of much smaller size actually have far, far more employees. But I think we are very efficient and work well with the staff that we have. Our focus is to reduce the delinquency rate even further. It's currently at 3.74%. We were unable to get comparison numbers from Cuyahoga and Franklin, but I do know anecdotally that we are actually far lower than they are. We work with groups such as Community Action Agency, WIN, the Legal Aid Society, and JFS to connect taxpayers to available funds to help them with their delinquent property taxes. We've held community meetings and events throughout the past year and are planning more to connect all these folks with available ARP funds, among other things. And we've organized, we've appeared at over 20 neighborhood and township councils as well to continue spreading that word. We continue to promote and expand our easy tax payment systems. E-checks through Point and Pay are the easiest way to do that right now. It's only a dollar fee. And it comes right out of, you know, you pay the e-check and there's no mailbox theft to worry about or anything like that. We are working on setting up automatic withdrawal for those folks who will sign up for the prepayment plan. We're just starting that process. We hope to have it in place for some time in 2023. And hopefully that will increase the number of people who join the treasurer's optional payment program. And the interest that gets generated from the prepayment helps us keep our office off of the general fund budget. And as everybody else, our only real concern is compensating our employees so that we can have the same high quality of staff that we currently have. We think that they've been doing a really great job serving the community so far. And I think we'll be able to continue doing that. So that is it, with no new requests and no real extra money.
Well, thank you so much for your presentation. I heard some of this information when I sat in with you for our investment advisory committee. Otherwise, I would have stood up like this. But just awesome, when you talk about increasing the salaries for your employees, what percentage are you looking at?
We recently raised our starting rate to $19 an hour. And so, so far, so good. We might be entering bargaining talks with, or organizing talks with a labor union. So we'll see what comes of that for the few in our office who are eligible and if there's any changes in the next year. But so far, so good.
All right. Great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice President Reese. She's still in shock over here.
I was about to say, this is the time to hit your gavel. Meeting is adjourned. This is the wonderful budget process.
Right.
No, I definitely have no questions about this, but thank you for this good news.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Drehouse.
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation. You're the first time we've heard that, that you are not requesting any more money. So that's very good news. I do want to thank you for your partnership in trying to help people with their property taxes and keep folks in their homes. I mean, it's something that's been a really high priority for all of us and really appreciate the partnership in that. Yeah, I mean, I have no questions. I just think it's good news. And thank you for, you know, doing what you can to keep things in order. I think, I think it's important to note that the skill sets are so different from office to office to office. And so they're very different, you know, as we go. So you are dealing with, you know, folks that have expertise in your office. And so I really appreciate you looking out for their interest in trying to keep that as low as possible.
Thank you. And just a quick mention, I need to thank my chief deputy, Mike Loneman, because without him, this would not have gotten as smoothly and we would not operate as well as we do. So thank you. Thanks very much.
Uh huh. Thank you. Okay. Next, our recorder, Scott Crowley.
Scott Crowley. Crowley. Scott Crowley, not Crowley.
Crowley. Yes, madam. Scott Crowley, Madam President. Good to see everybody, commissioners. How's it going?
Yes, good.
This is the first time that I have presented up here. So if we need to do any follow-up or address any additional questions, we are more than happy to do that. And so for the public, my name is Scott Crowley. I serve as the Hamilton County Recorder. I was sworn in and took over office in January of 2021. I would like to begin this presentation with a thank you for 2022. 2022 was a very successful year for us because of the resources and the support provided by the county commissioners and the county administrator. We launched a new system, recording notification system for the residents of Hamilton County in April of 2022. This is, been getting a lot of positive feedback. It is completely free. What we have been experiencing, and this is not unusual for our county, it is still very, very rare. And other counties have experienced this as well. But criminals are filing fraudulent deeds in recorders' offices, essentially stealing property. And so what this system does, we always try our best to catch it on the front end. However, this system is free for residents where you can register your name and you would receive an email notification if anybody tries to file or steal your property in our office. This is more advanced than other counties where what happens is, is let's say you register John Smith, you're going to get an email notification every time that happens to John Smith. This will send you the actually impacted deed so you know it's your property. And then we also hope to improve this system to where it actually affects the parcel and your address. Given a lot of positive feedback with regards to that system, and that was launched in April 2022. Thank you for that. Thank you for the budget. We were able to do market salary adjustments in 2022 as well. And then in addition, thank you for the additional position. That was critical. We needed that. Based on succession planning and workflow, we were able to promote internally. This also addressed increasing and improving diversity with regards to senior management. And then we were able to backfill that position with an individual that really is becoming a force multiplier for us, where she's taking over a number of classifications to include cashier, customer service specialist, and in addition, data entry. So thank you for 2022. We also want to thank you for the digitization that we went through in 2022. This was in regards to the pandemic response. People come into our office, the public utilizes our office for their records, title examinations. So when the building closed, we needed to still be able to provide that service to everybody. And what happened is, is that we went through a very lengthy process of putting a bunch of our records online. And that has been a significant improvement for not just the title examiners, but historical societies and the press. It increases transparency and accountability. That's been very good. You can see the numbers dwindle with regards to our office. Where pre-pandemic, you had at least 40 title examiners in there every single day. It's less than five. It's been a very huge benefit to the community and the real estate industry in general. Before we get into our 2023 request, I would like to discuss revenue. 2021, that first figure there, about 4.3, 4.4 million dollars went to the general fund. And in 2021, and this is for the public information, our fees are set by the general assembly. Our fees are set by the state legislator. And the way the fee works is that half goes to the general fund and half goes to Ohio Housing Trust Fund. And so that's what that 4.8, 4.9 million dollars is. We will state that 2021 appears to be the outlier. That is not typical. That's more than usual. And you can see that as reflected in 2022 where the numbers have come back down. The real estate market is not as hot as in 2022. I'm sorry, 2021. 2023 challenges, we are typical of many of the other departments. We are looking to continue to address market rate salaries. And that goes into recruitment, retention, and investment for our employees. And then I, you may have seen mention of this in the 2022 budget with regards to the new land management record system. We need a new system. We were hoping to do that in 2022, but we took a little more time this year to vet it appropriately. Initial estimates in 2022, we were expecting to spend $270,000 a year. And through And through additional vetting and selecting the right vendor, that's going to come down. It's probably going to be more around $150,000 a year. With regards to recruitment, retention, and investment, just like every single other county office, we are trying to address this. And this slide is more for the public. We are not just creating this number out of thin air. There was a method to this utilizing pay ranges. And we did a pretty in-depth analysis of every single position and every single person that's holding that position. Important to note, we're not doing an across-the-board increase. It's more methodical than that, where we're addressing every single position and every single person that's holding that position. So this is going to be the challenge for our office in 2023. We need a new land records management system. And we're prepared for that. We were taking all of last year to be prepared. The one thing that we've let the administrator and the budget director know is in order to prepare for that, we would like to move two positions from our tech fund. And it's my understanding that they were put into the tech fund during lean budgetary times in 2016, 2017. And so we would like to bring them out of the tech fund so that then we can use the fund for the advancements and the improvement of our land management record system. And so I'm just going to go back briefly. The $174,000, $175,000 figure, that's for the market rate adjustment. That's going to be an ask for the increase. And then moving those two positions from the tech fund, $150,000. So that's going to be our total ask for the increase. When we look back at previous recorder budgets, I think this will put us around 1.7, 1.8. The most I've seen in the past is a $2.5, $2.3 million budget. And that was in maybe 2007, 2002, 2001 timeframe. Thank you. Those are our wonderful employees. Thank goodness the Bengals won this week. I will say, I also need to take the opportunity to talk about the wonderful office and the wonderful staff down there. I'm sure every department experiences this as well. But the one thing I do want to brag about is that, you know, the positive feedback that we get from the community is fantastic. We prioritize customer service to the point where we're, we're seeing it. And, you know, we have a five star somehow, like on Google review, where people are actually going out of their way to let them know that they really do enjoy our office and take pride in that. And it reflects the county and it reflects positively on everybody. And that's what we prioritize in. That is our presentation. We thank you so much for your time and the opportunity.
Thank you so much for your presentation. You have been very methodical in your adjustments and what you need. And as it goes, what you're asking for goes all the way back to the time from 2000, 2001 timeframe. So that is awesome. And just updating your system, as you were saying, that you've done and making it more accessible to our residents is great. I have no questions. So thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you, Madam President.
Vice President Reese.
I just want to say thank you for your presentation. And I don't really have any questions. But one of the things we keep hearing about, obviously, is our technology systems. And considering that you're the recorder, we've got to make sure that is important. Have you, I guess I do have one question. So when I think about records and I think about what's going on, and you talked about the people sending out fraudulent states information, what about cybersecurity? Can you talk a little bit about that?
Yeah. So I mean, that, we can't talk about that. In terms of cybersecurity, we have a very enhanced, you know, take care of that aspect of it. What we are experiencing in terms of the fraudulent deeds, you know, the cybersecurity aspect doesn't necessarily play too much into that. But to answer your question, we are good there. Highly secure, no malware or spyware or anything where it could actually hijack our system and we would not be able to operate that day. We're pretty comfortable in that. With regards to the fraudulent deed filings, I don't mean to give a crash course to individuals that want to do it, but you would essentially just type out a deed. And you essentially, there's supposed to be some protection on the front end with that when you're trying to get it notarized. So that's how they're able to do it. Where they type out a fraudulent deed, they're able to seek out a notary that's not doing their job correctly, or they somehow do have that notary stamp. And that's what other counties have been experiencing as well. And so that's why it's important to implement the fraud alert system. Because not only then can you catch it on the front end, which is sooner, but these are pretty sophisticated and savvy criminals to where this is providing that deterrent factor where we're letting them know that we have this system. Please stop operating in Hamilton County. We've seen three of them that we know of since I've taken office.
Thank you. Thank you for staying on top of it.
My pleasure.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Commissioner Dreehouse.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. I have no questions other than I will say that, looking at the chart and the two pager that we were provided, it appears as there is a huge jump in revenue and expenses. But I can see that the housing trust is accounting for that. So I was going to ask a question about that, but I think I've cleared that up in my mind.
I had the same question when I received that sheet. And I initially, and then upon further review, it looks like that this will be the first year where the Ohio Housing Trust Fund is being treated both as a revenue source and expenditure, if I'm correct on that.
Yeah, that's what it looks like. Yeah, because it's appearing on both sides of the ledger.
Yeah. So we actually accounted for it the first year in the 2022 budget when there was a state law change that required that agency funds be reported as resources, as revenues and expenditures. So you'll recall, as we got into the budget process last year, actually, in the middle of the process, we informed the board that the budget is actually going to go up rather significantly. But it had nothing to do with discretionary spending or anything like that. It was accounting for the various agency funds that we have in the county, one of them being the Ohio Housing Trust Fund that now, under state law, requires that we show that as a budgetary resource and expenditure. So we did nothing different. We're just accounting for the money in a different way.
And to answer your question as well, I believe, and I would have to do a deeper dive on the analysis of the projections, but those projections are typically more conservative because the housing market and the real estate market tends to be difficult to predict. We were not, I'm sorry.
No, I was going to say, if you kind of do the math here, and I'm doing it as we speak, I can see that expenses increased a little bit. But yeah, the chart is, it's misleading because this housing trust money is mixed in here. But it's only a slight increase as you go. So in the same with the revenue side. So I was going to ask you a question about that hugely, but I can, I can see that it's, it's just an accounting issue. But thank you. Thank you for your partnership.
It's my pleasure.
Thank you so much for your hard work.
Thank you.
Thank your staff.
Of course. And that's David Pittinger back there. Wonderful. And of course, the employees there are just fantastic. So thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Okay. Last but not least, Emergency Management, Nick Crossley.
Hello.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So I will get, so we have the benefit of working together on a quarterly basis, if not sometimes a weekly basis. But for the benefit of the public, just to give us sort of some background about Hamilton County's Emergency Management Agency. So we are created due to the Ohio Revised Code 5502, which requires a county to have an emergency management agency support countywide. So of course, we serve all the 49 communities and 815,000 residents of Hamilton County. Our mission that we review on an annual basis is to provide effective coordination and collaboration to create a culture of preparedness that builds and sustains a disaster-resistant and resilient community in Hamilton County. So it's not just be able to respond to disasters and recover them, but also to prepare and try to mitigate the impacts of disasters before they happen. We support county level and municipal level emergency plan development, training, and exercises. So again, for all 49 governments and county government. We develop county-wide threat assessments, gap analysis, and needs assessment to support grant requests and also plan and process and procedure development. We manage grants for especially the Urban Area Security Initiative, which we just received again this year. State Homeland Security, the Emergency Management Performance Grants, and other miscellaneous grants on behalf of many organizations in Hamilton County. So one example is we're currently coordinating a grant for a cybersecurity exercises for communication centers. So Hamilton County Communication, the city of Cincinnati. We are focusing, you've mentioned several times, cybersecurity. So we are working with our critical infrastructure, critical first responders to work on their cybersecurity preparedness. So this exercise that we're putting together and running next month will be a great benefit to them. And we manage these grants. With all of these grants, most of these organizations outside of law enforcement can't apply for them unless we manage the grant for them, which means we do everything from gather the specs from the equipment they're trying to purchase, actually go through the purchasing process, working with Hamilton County Purchasing, receive the products. And then we track everything that we buy through a Homeland Security Grant for the life of that product. So we track equipment on an annual basis, sometimes 10, 15, 20, 25 years. So it's an ongoing process that we, that we support. We do the county-wide hazard mitigation plan. So again, I think, especially in the last few years under the Biden administration, funding for hazard mitigation and, and building more resilient communities has increased tenfold into the billions of dollars range. So we work with both county government agencies and departments, as well as our local communities, to identify where they might need assistance to protect their communities, flood mitigation, landslide mitigation, wind mitigation, whatever it might be. Identify where those projects are and make sure they're eligible for funding, should that become available. And so with the increase in funding through the current last few years in Congress, it's become really important. And then of course, as you know, we manage all of the county-wide hazard notification systems, the emergency notification systems. So that includes 196 outdoor warning sirens, Alert Hamilton County, which allows us to notify not only people who asked to be notified, but also we manage wireless emergency alerts, which is the cell phone notification. So if you think back to Friday, when we had the unfortunate incident at Princeton High School, one of the things we do in that situation is, one, I coordinate with Administrator Ludo, so he's aware of a critical situation in the county. He then coordinates with you to let you know. We then monitor that, working with all of our communication centers and our other law enforcement partners and, and first responders. We evaluate the situation as it unfolds and make sure, especially from that initial response, should they need an emergency notification to the public, which as, as Administrator Ludo and I have talked about in the past, the need to be available 24/7 to notify the public of a critical threat has increased tenfold in the last five years. And a situation while fake, if you will, it didn't seem false to the parents and the communities that it impacted. It took hours to resolve so that the students could be reunited with their parents. And so we have to monitor that event from beginning to end in case there's a need by, in this case, the local community or the county or the state to notify the public or the federal government. So that's the kind of thing we provide. In addition to being able to notify landlines, I mean, we notify, we maintain all these systems 24/7. So we, and again, we've worked closely with you throughout the pandemic. So that had a pretty large impact on our agency. So much like a lot of government services, they sort of slowed down. However, we were just redirected on responding to the pandemic. And now we are focused on learning from the impacts of the pandemic and making sure that we can mitigate, try to mitigate those impacts, work with our communities to be stronger, and then help facilitate the recovery as we move forward. Our budget is fairly static. It's a slide increase over, this is actually the old slide. I apologize for that. I sent an updated slide this morning. It's actually a lot different. So I apologize for that. I'm sure, Jeff, that you have that. So look at the budget brief you have. So in effect, the wages and benefits from the County General Fund was $422,000 in 2022. We've asked for an increase to $516,000. We've talked to this with our executive committee, which of course includes the three county commissioners. One of the things we've, I've known before the pandemic, but really came out in the pandemic, is being able to assist vulnerable populations, vulnerable communities through whatever type of disaster it is. So one of the lessons learned that Montgomery, Montgomery County learned post-disaster, post their tornado they had, was we need to make sure that, at the end of the day, taking care of residents is the government's responsibility with the assistance of nonprofits, private sector, for-profits, whoever it is. So we, working with, with, with my board, with you, have engaged a specific staff person just to coordinate those resources so that we are prepared before the disaster happens. And that's our goal. So we're not creating it after the disaster happens. We continue to operate all the emergency alert systems, the sirens, things like that. You're fully aware of that. That's gone down a little bit. We had some one-time expenditures. In '22, we have to replace some integral equipment that helps us send out the signal. And then we are also, and I think I've talked about this with all of you, I'm always looking for synergies with other county services so that instead of paying for something twice for us to be able to do it, that we can just engage with other county departments. You're going to see that in the new EMA 911 building. Andy Knapp refers to it at the 911 EMA building. You'll see it there, so a synergy there so that rather than paying for two separate facilities, you, you get a lot of savings by putting us both in the same building. It's the same thing with the siren system. So I approached Mr. Ludo a couple of years ago as our, as our regular contractor looked at leaving the business. How can we engage with county facilities to maintain the physical sirens? And then we continue to manage them and make sure that they're up and running on a daily basis. So that, you will see some savings, especially over time. Rather than paying individual contractor, we can just borrow a staff member for a short time, go out, fix a siren, go back to their regular job. So we do anticipate some savings there. And then of course, you continue to support the countywide hazmat capability, Greater Cincinnati Hazmat, which is an important, considering the amount of hazmat we have in our county, very important capability. And so, and then we also offset some of the county costs. We, of course, as you all know, I advocate aggressively for increased grant funding from the state. We use that for our hazardous materials response functions. But also we get an Emergency Management Performance Grant, which goes toward help pay for personnel cost and benefits. So as we look forward, of course, as everybody has said, development and, and retainment of quality staff. So much like other public safety entities, we're challenged by what we do is a unique skill. And so in some respects, we bring in new people to develop that skill. In some respects, we need to hire people who, who somewhat know what we do and how to do it. Again, so that we don't lose ground. We've been challenged also by the fact that, when I started in this business 20 years ago, public safety was public safety. You just did what you had to do. You were on call 24/7. It was just part of the job. And that has just changed, where being on call 24/7, especially for emergency management and our increased responsibility in emergency notification and being prepared to help 40 fire departments, 40 police departments, multiple specialty teams, has increased the workload and increased the vigilance we have to provide 365 days a year, 24 hours a day. So I use the example, Christmas Day, a couple of years ago, we had a gas leak in Price Hill. Worked all day, I was actually duty officer over Christmas, worked all day on the public notification on that on behalf of the city of Cincinnati back then. And that just is every day we have to be in that. Because even with the Princeton situation, sitting at my desk Friday morning, page goes off, everything, everything ends until we deal with that situation. Talked about the maintenance of the outdoor warning sirens. Post-pandemic, we've talked about this and part of our being prepared for the future. Obviously, we have, we, we still have the pandemic effects. I had people out today with COVID. My wife just got it last week. I mean, so that continues and the disruption that causes. So we have to be prepared to support our first responders and our public health agencies as they might have, might need equipment in the future. So that is the development of PPE cash. And then of course, maintaining that as we go forward. That's a new responsibility. And then of course, focusing on mask care. We need to coordinate all the organizations that can help Hamilton County residents in a disaster. Preferably develop those relationships, develop those procedures, those plans, train with, with these organizations so that when a disaster happens, we're not delayed in supporting our residents. And then hopefully that leads to a quicker recovery for as many residents as possible. We are going through, I worked with Administrator Ludo and, and the human resources we're currently undergoing, same system you use to evaluate the positions under the board. I've asked for a review of a few of I've asked for a review of a few of our positions that needed to be evaluated, we've had a lot of responsibilities changed, so our agency has changed greatly since I joined in 2015, as far as the focus and, and the responsibilities. So again, budget challenges, so we continue the county emergency management team development, so that during COVID, from a relationship perspective, we really expanded the amount of relationships we had, because we had to be so creative in the pandemic when responding everything from how do we get PPE, to how do we do home-delivered meals? We, we had many conversations, you and I did, about, and then what we benefited from was we made a lot of, we developed a lot of relationships with a lot of non-typical agencies and organizations, and we want to take that and continue that as we move forward. Develop and maintain our primary EOC and our alternate EOC, so as you know, we have a primary in Price Hill, we have an alternate in Green Township, plus we are developing the new EMA 911 Building. That's really, that's an incredibly in-depth process to develop a building and to remodel it, so that's taken a lot of time. Post-pandemic catch-up, again, you've heard that theme throughout the budget presentations, the community need, our community needs for emergency management support, got a call yesterday from the city of, one of our communities, asking for help doing an exercise for their executive leadership. And so, my goal, and you'll see this tomorrow when you come out to our, to our community meeting, is that every government in Hamilton County has a responsibility, regardless of size and complexity, to be prepared for how they're going to coordinate a disaster response in their community. My job, and, and I know that, that you all know this, is to put together the systems and the processes and procedures to help them get there, relevant to their size and scope. It also helps us know, we have everything from Mount Healthy to, to the city of Cincinnati. So we know that working with Mount Healthy, we can, we want to better understand what the needs of Mount Healthy might be versus the city of Cincinnati, who's a much more complex and larger organization. So that's why we continue to focus on all 49 communities as we, as we work through it. And then, of course, we did, again, these challenges of public safety, having people on call 24/7, and the amount of commitment it takes, we instituted a small duty officer stipend, which is partially paid for by grant funds, and then partially paid for by general fund. And so, that is really where we're at, I think a lot of you know and understand what we do, I think the public gets a, gets a, a picture of it. We've been very successful in the pandemic, I think we are used to being nimble, we are used to figuring out where our priorities must be on any given day, and we continue to appreciate the support from the board, from the Board of County Commissioners and all the communities that we serve.
Thank you so much, and we're looking at a place to store some of your supplies and warehousing out in the Forest Park area. Your staff, you and your staff are just, you have to be organized, because you impact so many areas and neighborhoods, so I asked Andy the same question I'm going to ask you, when do you, when do you foresee the move-in date for the new facility?
Well, I hear, and again, this is all supposition, that we might get to move in first, because we're a bit less complicated, you give me an internet connection and power, and I can operate, so I hope within 18 months. I think with, again, that may not be to full capability, because I think, again, and, Administrator Aludo and I had many conversations about this, co-locating us with the communication center, is I think we help Andy and his staff, and then their, their capabilities will help us be a better emergency management agency for the residents, so I hope 18 months.
Okay. Because as I looked at the rent supplies and all that, that's where we currently are, there's no need to put this in our 2023 budget.
Correct.
Correct. And so, have we broke ground at all at that area?
So we, we've purchased the building, we have, we've started the design, and we've started the conversations about what needs to go into the building.
Okay.
So we, we have a, we have a basic foreplan.
I hope I didn't miss that, okay.
No, 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 we haven't done anything official, this is all.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, just work the ground.
Yeah, we're still identifying cost and working out with the city of Springville.
Sure, because we're getting out there, going out beyond the city of Cincinnati.
I think it's phenomenal, I think, I actually, personally, you know, I, I live and work in Hamilton County, and I think it's great for us to, to be out in the community, and of course, with the new, if, if the other facility goes through, that's just down the street, that's a great opportunity as well. I know that, as a board, what we're doing with our space is not only the public health preparedness, but also supporting our other, our urban search and rescue, we've developed, you heard the sheriff talk about the drone unit for the sheriff's department, we support through grants, a drone unit for urban, for our Hamilton County Urban Search and Rescue, that is a phenomenal resource, that, that team, which is made up of volunteers, but we support through grants and a small financial contribution, but they have a phenomenal drone capability that will help with damage assessment, it can help with all kinds of stuff as far as what disaster response is concerned.
Thank you so much, your budget is, is very reasonable, for sure, so I certainly appreciate that, thank you. Vice President Reese.
Yes, Mr. Nick Crossley, you did it again. I mean, every time you come up here, you have, you reaching out, maximizing our opportunities with grants, having us as a leader, you have been a leader for this county in terms of getting communications to us, coordinating, making sure, you know, everyone from the top to the bottom knows what's going on, and I really like that you now have focused on, now, how do we prepare for something, instead of kind of after the fact. I do want to really thank you about the text messages, since I've been here, I've, I've gotten several of them, where you keep us abreast about everything, from, you know, a major accident that's shutting down a highway, to, you know, anything, Princeton and a number of other things, weather situations that's getting ready to hit, and we get those through our administrator. And I personally want to thank, I got a text, usually I get him, I say, okay, great, he's on top of it, but then, it's a lot when you get something that hit home, and when I got that Princeton, it was like, what? And first of all, a school, we've had several in our county that has been targeted with this type of hoax, type of situation, but when I did get that, it was like, we were first on it, and got it actually before you turned the TV on, then they were reporting it, and my sister and my brother-in-law, they were at work, and didn't get their parents, and they had not been notified, and I remember notifying my, my sister, she was, she hung up on me, said, I'm in a meeting, and then I text her, said, hey, and then she called me right away, but you're right, even though, thank God, it was not real, but at the same time, people were still shaken up, my nieces, I know other kids, I did get in touch finally with my niece, and, and she told me that her other sister, her sister, her twin, was shaking, she told her mom, she's shaking, mom, and she's very nervous. Of course, you know, my mom, my, my sister, 100 miles an hour to get out there, you know, give me my kid, like a lot of other parents, but I also want to compliment the first responders.
Oh.
I mean, they were on it in seconds, and it accounts for our county, what type of county we have with our first responders, you saw fire trucks from different jurisdictions, you saw police officers from different jurisdictions, they weren't like, oh, it's Sharonville, we're going to sit back, I mean, everything was launched, from county, our county sheriffs to the different police departments, even Cincinnati Police, I saw, they were out there, I mean, everybody was saying, hey, this is Hamilton County, these are our kids, our children, and everybody was on the scene, and it didn't take long. So I do want to compliment, compliment them, and with these situations, you, you can't, you can't wait, can't second guess it, you got to go, and everyone was going, and I just saw so many people in the community, all over, no matter what your background, no matter if you went to that school or not, you were ready to go, people were ready to grab baseball bats, but whatever you have, we got to stop this to protect our kids. So I just want to give a compliment to you, I want to give a compliment to our first responders, our communication process, I just thought it was fantastic, so I wanted to make sure of that. The other thing I wanted to compliment you on, because we always talk about budgets, it's a good investment, because when COVID hit, you, once again, organized, getting PPE equipment down from the top level to the community level, to churches, you were out there, even bringing the churches, and how do you help with the churches? So I just, you're always innovative and understanding that safety is multi-level, multifaceted, and so, yeah, I think this definitely is a good investment, and I want to thank you for your leadership again.
I just, I'd like to add that, as, as the three county commissioners for Hamilton County, that's why I keep you informed, you are the, the, I don't want to offend anybody, there's lots of elected officials, but as the county commissioners, you do have countywide responsibility, and I do, I do, I work with Jeff to notify you, so that we do it appropriately, but that's why I do it, so that you know what's going on in Hamilton County, so that you're not surprised, and I'm a big component, and we've worked real closely with our, both our, both our communication centers and other first responders, to try to get notified as soon as possible, so that we're not having to wait for a news alert, although I do use the media a lot for, for real-time situation analysis. And I will say, first of all, that the, I analyze every, almost every active shooter incident in the country, just to see what I can learn from it, and the response by the agencies in Hamilton County was phenomenal, I'm pretty sure they had it figured out in 20 minutes, that it was a, I mean, there were, there was indicators right when it came in, that perhaps it was not real, but they, they can operate based on that. And I will say, led by Sharonville, and, and the sheriff, and CPD, and all the other agencies that went up there, phenomenal response, I just, I've been wanting to say that publicly. And then, two, just to show you where your support goes for our grant management capability, the mass casualty truck, I don't know if you saw it on the media, drove through the media frame, that was purchased with Homeland Security Fund several years ago, working with the city of Cincinnati, we continue to maintain that truck, and that, and again, casualty versus fatality, so casualty helping triage and things like that, if there, if there are any wounded residents, so that is the kind of capability we're trying to ensure that we have available in Hamilton County through our grant management efforts.
Thank you, Commissioner Drehouse.
Thank you, thank you, Nick, for being here, for your update. Yeah, so your partnership is really invaluable to all of us, whether it's an emergency response to a potential active shooter in a school, or whether it's getting the PPE out during the pandemic, or setting up an emergency location in case we needed it, if there was an overage at the hospitals, I mean, your, your work is expansive, and I, I know I didn't understand all of it when I first got here, I'm getting to know more, yeah, I'm sure there's more to learn, but yeah, I think this partnership that we have with you and your team has been really important to us, not only as we do our jobs, but also as we communicate out to the, all, all the 49 jurisdictions about what is available from the county, how we are a resource, especially during emergency situations, so I'm, I'm really grateful for the partnership, thank you.
And I'd be remiss if I didn't point out, we are, the county is nationally accredited for its emergency management program, that's included, our sustainment of that accreditation is in, is in our budget request, it's a small request, and also a shout out to all of, all of our staff, so the emergency management staff, but again, we couldn't do this without Jeff's support, without the other county staff, without the first responder agencies, I mean, of course, we work with everything from township administrators to public works directors, to public health, so you name it, JFS, if you name it, we work with it, and our goal is to never be so bogged down in what we do, that we don't see that this is what we do, especially when it comes to disaster response, so again, I appreciate your support.
Thank you so much, we appreciate you.
Thank you.
Your staff. Okay, with no further discussion, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Commissioner Summeradumis.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.